It is Tuesday, March 18th. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Heiser.
Here.
Rizzo. Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. City council will now go into executive session to discuss agenda items one, A through G, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. It's 6:59 PM. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now on item 1D. Mayor Protem.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into purchase agreement in a form approved by the city attorney to acquire the properties located at 103 North Burleson and 208 West Center Street for a fair and reasonable price, including closing costs, which amount is available from existing city funds for property acquisition, and to complete the transaction and to close on the purchase.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember McKinney. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Six to zero?
I'm recused.
All right, we have a recusal. Motion carries six to zero. All right, motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:01 PM. It is Tuesday, March 18th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Heiser.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve the minutes from the city council special meeting on March 4th, including the regular minute, meeting minutes on the same day, March 4th, 2025.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by the Mayor Protem, that we approve the minutes as discussed. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have several folks registered to speak. First up is Thomas Shinick.
Mayor, council members, I am Tom Shinick. I serve on the Board of Directors for Hometown Kyle. We were greatly surprised to find out only 24 hours ago that Agenda Items 21 and 22 were to be put before the council tonight. The items relate to two parcels where Old Stagecoach and Center Street meet, and the roundabout to be constructed there. We are surprised and very concerned as the implied threat about failed negotiations comes so shortly after negotiations had begun. We don't understand why the city is aggressively advancing these agenda items as they have hindered our ability to respond to offers at several material points. First, the initial notifications were misdirected, not in September, but rather our first notice was received late December. Merry Christmas. Second, trying to check out the impressive survey reports dated in August, we ended up complaining bitterly that we couldn't verify anything. Their surveyors had surveyed on paper only. The physical survey and placement of stakes finally happened only two weeks ago, February 27th. The survey report was falsely drawn up. Third, the appraisal is at best superficial, reflecting none of the complexities surrounding the acquisitions. These land transactions cannot be separated from the project that requires them. Fourth, the city abruptly withdrew the offer letter for a third parcel, which had occupied so much of our attention initially. Time wasted. To our great frustration, the correct acquisition process has not been followed. The roundabout project directly threatens the safety of our homeowners and their properties. New and obvious risks are being introduced at that intersection by reshaping how traffic will flow through the intersection. At that location, we have only a wooden privacy fence, clearly insufficient protection against cars and trucks straying from the roundabout. We must protect our homeowners from the inevitable wrecks due to the changed, now curving, traffic flows. Characterizing these agenda items as mere fee simple land transactions is more akin to wishfully evading responsibilities. Notwithstanding these threatening agenda items, we have entered into negotiation with the city in good faith, with the many problems to be resolved in mind, most importantly, the protection issue. The laughable appraisals say there is no cost to cure. We all know this is false, and we hope that together we will resolve these issues and protect our homeowners. That can only be done by facing the reality that the negotiations are not simply about the land, but also the project motivating the acquisitions and the threat to our safety. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. Next up is Ms. Kate Johnson.
Good evening. Honorable mayor, council members, and fellow residents, I stand before you today to advocate for something that I believe is essential to preserving the identity and heritage of our city, the creation of a Historical Archives Commission for Kyle. By creating this commission through a city ordinance, we are taking an important step toward ensuring that Kyle's history is not only preserved, but actively curated, protected, and made accessible to future generations. While history is all around us, it does not preserve itself. Documents fade, photographs get lost, stories go untold. Establishing a Historical Archives Commission provides a structured, long-term approach to gathering, preserving, and sharing the history of Kyle. Other cities in Hayes County, San Marcos, Buta, Wimberly, and Dripping Springs have already taken similar steps, recognizing that history is an essential part of a city's identity. It's time for Kyle to do the same. Creating this commission gives it the structure and ability needed to succeed. It ensures that preserving our history for future generations is not a short-term project, but a permanent commitment. A commission can guide our city in establishing an archive, prioritizing significant events, and maintaining accountability in preserving our heritage. Kyle is one of the fastest-growing cities in Texas. As we look forward to the future, we must also honor that past that brought us here. By passing an ordinance to establish a Historical Archives Commission, we take an essential step in protecting our city's legacy and ensuring that our history is not forgotten. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, next up is Ms. Lila Knight. Barred the readers. I like it.
My name is Lila Knight, and I'm here tonight to support Agenda Item 23 regarding the establishment of a Kyle Historical Archives Commission. This would, of course, be a long-term commitment and would require a certain amount of storage space and the availability for the public, the public to access the materials. I would urge you to work with existing historical organizations that have already been working on projects like this. Hayes County has both the county clerk's office, and they have digitized almost all of their deed records, which are searchable online. And the Hayes County Historical Commission, which has been in existence for 70 years, we maintain our own records in our offices down at the courthouse. Many, there are many examples. The San Marcos Public Library has an incredible program. It's very, very good. And they have begun scanning a lot of their documents that are available on the library's website, including almost all of the newspapers ever published in Hayes County, which are searchable by keyword. Even Denton has the Denton Courthouse Museum, which I have used in my research in the past, and it has like an excellent program. And I'm sure the city manager could put you in contact with someone up there. And there are many other databases, like the Portal to Texas History, which scans documents from all over Texas and makes them available online to everyone. So I'm glad that you're looking at doing this, and I look forward to listening to your discussion further. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is David Klaus.
I would like to thank the city of Kyle for allowing me last year to attend this workshop where I could learn how this city works. It was amazing. But what I'm really here for is for the senior citizens group. I am asking that you please listen to what they want to do. I know there's some not-happiness with them on this, but I need y'all to do that. They wouldn't be here if it wasn't important to them, but it looks great where they're going to move to. I think it's going to work out good. But I'm also asking you to please help me and other handicapped people when you build handicap bathrooms, parking places, and walking ramps, not to do what ADA asks you to do, but to do common sense stuff, you know? So like, you could ask me, you could ask any handicap person, what do you think about it? I'll be happy to tell you. So I went to Buc-Ee's two weeks ago, and you know how many bathrooms, handicap bathrooms they have in Buc-Ee's? And we know those bathrooms are used a lot. One handicap bathroom? That's not right. So my handicap is very visible to everyone, but there are handicaps like cancer and other illnesses, and I think y'all look great, but you may have a handicap. I don't know. But I will be happy to answer any questions that the city has about handicap. And one of the issues that I really need some help on is right out here in front, because I love to go to Bloodworth Barbecue, but I have to cross my offices right here, and I have to cross this road, and there is only one controlled intersection here. And so people don't stop for me. They just assume run over me. I've asked the city to do something else to make it safer. They said it's too expensive, so I don't know about that. But I want to appreciate it and thank you. Don't have much to say, but please listen to them, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, next up is Betty Conley.
Good evening, mayor and city council and residents. As many of you know, my name is Betty Conley, and I'm the current president of the nonprofit named Kyle Area Senior Zone, also known as CAS. CAS was formed 19 years ago when Adele Hurst saw the need for a place for seniors to come together for fellowship and meals. The group would meet at restaurants, homes, and even a church hall. In 2006, Hurst would then lobby to use the old city hall, now called the Krug Activity Center. In 2008, city council formally dedicated Old City Hall as the home for CAS. Our mission has evolved over time with growth and needs of this diverse community. We strive to be a safe, friendly, one-stop-go-to resource for age-related topics. We focus on improving, promoting, and advocating for the general welfare of seniors and disabled adults in the needs of social, nutritional, physical, mental, spiritual, and education. And while our membership is set aside for disabled adults and seniors, we incorporate support groups, educational classes, intergenerational programs that serve this whole entire community. We have partnered with several city projects, local businesses, nonprofits, to keep us active in the community's needs. Over the 19 years, we have outgrown the walls of our home. The problem we are facing is that the number of seniors in Hayes County and the surrounding area, as well as the community, will require more resources, services, and space to accommodate the explosive growth. The city of Kyle has purchased a building located at 1500 Daisy with the intentions to focus and establish a new user agreement for the seniors to have a new home, which we are very thankful for and appreciate all that you're doing. With your help, we are able to combat the issue of a larger space to accommodate this growth. I can only imagine that Adele Hurst would be smiling ear to ear to see the growth of this organization. We cannot thank you enough to keep Hurst's mission alive and support CAS with this partnership in the new facility, bridging generation to generation. And from my heart, I thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next up is Lisa Azar.
Hi. I wanted to talk to you about Agenda, the item 21 and 22. I was hoping it could be moved to the front as well. I'm a member of the HOA board for my community, which is Hometown Kyle. And we are, we back up to the roundabout. I would like you to take into consideration, you know, I'm here to, to talk about trying to protect my neighbors and my community. We're worried about their safety being next to that roundabout there, and to ensure that they're able to enjoy, their peaceful enjoyment of the backyard, their backyards, which are going to be backed up to there. I would ask that you guys would consider putting in a rock wall, like something along that Six Creeks has, along where that roundabout is going to go. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next up is Mike McDonald.
Good evening. I don't have any paper with me. I'm just going to shoot from the hip. So whatever comes on mine is what I'm going to say. I've come and spoke before the council several times, and the sad part, this is very sad. You guys represent us, and it seems when, whenever we bring a concern to you, I don't know how many of those actually get acted on because there's no transparency. There's no communication between you and the citizens. So we don't know what you do when we come up here and we speak and we bring out a concern that we have. I heard the senior citizen people up here talking. They, they came out and they spoke about needing a place to, to meet. Well, sure enough, it's happening. But what about spending? I've, I've seen your campaign signs out there when y'all were running for city council, and you know what? They look pretty patriotic, and they say, oh, I want to do this for Kyle, but you know what? What about the spending? I didn't see nothing on your, on your campaign posters that said, I'm going to spend and spend and spend. Listen, I'm 66 years old. This is my last house. I'm not going to, I'm not buying any other house. I'm going to stay here, and I love it here. But if you're going to keep spending and spending and spending, can I afford it? Can I afford to stay in my house? Man, I mean, I, I would like to get an independent auditor to audit the city of Kyle and see exactly where all this money is going. Because we are, the taxes, the city's raising taxes, what are you raising it for? That's my, what do you, what are we, what are we spending that money on? It's very, it's very frustrating to me that every time, every year, when my taxes come in, I look at it, and, and you guys are raising the taxes. What are we buying? What are we doing? I mean, do we really need that big recreational center up there? You know, they, we, if I wanted, I could go to San Marcos, and, and there's recreational center down there. There's one in Buta, there's one in Kyle if I want. Do we need to draw that, all that stuff here to Kyle? I mean, there's a difference between wants and needs, and I think sometimes we get confused as to what the want and the needs really are. It saddens me because you guys are the representatives. You, you, you guys have the money. You guys are in charge of the money, and you decide where it's going to be spent on. And, and you're not listening to the citizens. You don't even ask them what they, what we should spend the money on. You guys just saying, you know what? I think we need this, I think we need that. And you know what? We really don't need that kind of stuff. I mean, drive around Kyle, we need water. That's what we really need. Look at all the apartments being built, all the new houses being built. We need roadway. We need all that stuff. That stuff is priority. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Tia Horton.
Hello, I am Tia Horton, and I live in Hometown Kyle. My backyard is actually Stagecoach and Center Street, that intersection, that is my backyard. And for months and months and months and months and months and months now, me along with the HOA board have been trying to get information from the city, that third-party services y'all have hired to do the things. We have been met with deadlines that the city and the third-party sources have not met, and then we get pushed back months. This is supposed to start in October. When we look at maps, it shows that y'all are putting a sidewalk three inches from the fence line, and the road is now going to be 17 feet from my fence, 17 feet from where my kids play. And as we all saw recently, we know that roundabouts do not stop cars from driving straight into them. Ditches don't stop people from driving down the ditch, up to the ditch, into people's houses, and it's, I've been met with, oh, we did a study, and we don't see any need for safety barriers. Comes down my back porch for one afternoon, one school drop-off, one rush hour. I mean, we've recorded GoPro footage of the amount of, you know, construction trucks that run the stop sign, which I understand a roundabout can be helpful if people know how to use them. People don't know how to use them around here. I know they're new. And I don't want my fence and my kids to be the ones who learn that people don't know how to drive. And I understand it's going to happen. I know a roundabout's going to happen. That's not my problem. I think it'll be helpful. We won't hear drag racing at night. We'll just hear drifting. But I, I.
That's good.
I know that the neighborhood has countered y'all's offer to try and compensate our HOA to build me and my neighbors a wall to protect us from the cars, and no response. Attorneys have submitted it. There have been emails sent. No one has responded to the counter. And I, I feel like this is something that just keeps putting on the back burner, and I'm here to speak up for myself finally. And so I, I think it's a really important part of the meeting, and I think it needs to be addressed, and I don't want it to be a whole, like, oh, we didn't meet our deadline. We're actually going to talk about it at the main meeting, because that's what we've been getting this whole time. So yeah, would appreciate getting, I guess, moved up sooner and not be, I think, 21 and 22.
All right, thank you. I have one form, but it's not filled out, so I don't know who to, I don't know who to call on. It doesn't have a name on it or anything. I think it was Ms. McDonald, but it just, you don't have your name on it and stuff. There's a signature, but I can't, I can't read the name from the signature. That's okay. If you could just state your name when you go up and then fill that out and give that to Cynthia. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. I'm like, Mike, I just, I'm speaking off the cuff. I didn't sit down and write something at home. I did want to briefly say something about the tree. I know this kind of is a done deal or whatever, but I just wanted to know why, when one council member, it was Mark McKinney, mentioned maybe perhaps saving the tree through private money instead of the city's money, why that wasn't even an option? Like, instead of having an option of displacing six families, why couldn't we have an option of some philanthropists coming in, some kind of private funding to move the tree so it wouldn't be a burden on the city, on the citizens of the city? And then the property acquisitions that you just mentioned that were approved, I'd like to know who handled the purchase, if it was a national firm, or who's now handling the purchases, and how you all arrived at a fair price, or how you're arriving at a fair price. I'm also asking that Agenda Items 21 and 22 be moved to the top of the discussion. And in dealing with all eminent domain acquisitions, I hope that these, instead of what's on the agenda, instead of if a negotiation isn't met, it just being decided, if it returns back to council if negotiations fail. And, hmm. ARWA was supposed to be online in February. It's now March, and Mike Murphy told me at the last meeting, probably May. I sure hope it doesn't change again. We're in a dry, a dry time again, and we need the water. It's, it's time to, we're at wildfire risk right now, and so I'm hoping that that is not delayed any longer. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Cynthia, do you have any more forms? All right, thank you. Next up, we're going to close citizen comments. Next up is agenda order. Do we have any items that we wish to move around? I'm okay bringing the, the PCN items forward. We have to bring them forward as a block because they're part of a single presentation. And then I'd also, if there are no objections, I'd like to bring that item on the Historical Archives Commission forward, so Ms. Johnson, Ms. Lila can be here. Both of those can still come after the consent agenda, though. That's okay. Any other items? All right, next up is reports and presentations. Proclamation honoring Crime Stoppers Campus Student Ambassadors from Lehman High School. Councilmember McKinney.
Yes, thank you, mayor. It was brought to my attention that we had some, some really inspirational students from Lehman High School, and I started looking into this Texas Crime Stoppers Ambassador's program, and I learned quite a bit about it. To, to really emphasize the, the accomplishment that these threes have gotten, I looked at it, only 12 students get selected statewide. The entire state of Texas is 12. And it's not every year. They will, they will sit on until, till their seats are vacated. So for us to have three out of 12 from, from one high school is just mind-boggling to me. The, the steps that they have to go through to, to be selected, it's a very rigorous application process. There are interviews with judges. I mean, they have to demonstrate a premier-level leadership amongst their peers. They've got to be role models on, you know, just the, not just the campus, but the community. Projects that they have to do within the calendar year. It's just really impressive to me, everything that they went through. So, that being said, whereas Texas Crime Stoppers organizations are community-based partnerships formed by dedicated citizens, law enforcement, and the media, and whereas Crime Stoppers organizations work together toward a common goal, the reduction of crime and the arrest and conviction of criminals and fugitives statewide, and whereas local Crime Stoppers organizations are designed to achieve citizen interest and involvement in three ways: anonymity, establishing reward systems that pay for information leading to the arrest or charged file, charges filed on persons involved in crimes, and selecting an unsolved crime of the week featured by reenactment in nightly television news broadcasts, radio spots, and newspaper articles. And whereas Crime Stoppers organizations also have campus programs that strive And whereas Crime Stoppers organizations also have campus programs that strive to protect our students and young people by reducing crime in schools, receiving thousands of tips that allow them to successfully recover weapons and seize illegal drugs from Texas schools. And whereas Lehman High School students Jade Gully, Violet Gilliam, and Giselle Rodriguez-Cortez, members of Hayes County Crime Stoppers Campus Programs, were recently appointed as ambassadors to the statewide Texas Crime Stoppers Campus Program, whereas they are the first ambassadors from Lehman High School to be appointed as ambassadors. And whereas Jade Gully was awarded the Silver Medal Award for her entry into the statewide Crime Stoppers Campus Poster Competition, now therefore I, Mark McKinney, in recognition of the importance of Crime Stoppers organizations, do hereby honor Jade Gully, Violet Gilliam, and Giselle Rodriguez-Cortez, and recognize their commitment to stopping local crime and their example of community service to all. Sign and enter this 18th day of March, 2025. Staff put together some swag bags for you guys, so if we can, just have everybody come up in the front.
Okay. Sounds great.
Gentlemen, I will take a girl quick photo. around the way. I got to move back a little, sorry. All right, on the count of three, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Very, very, very well deserved. All right, next up is agenda item number four, receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff feedback on programming and concepts for the new facility at 1500 Dacey Lane. Mr. David Lopez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. We've got some exciting updates for you all regarding the senior center at 1500 A.C. So, quick overview is, we're going to look at, we're going to do a side, go over a side analysis of all of our engagement activities and public input meetings. We're going to show you some proposed concepts and the evolution of these concepts, as well as a budget and next steps. So, we shortened our timeline that was projected for public input, but we didn't shortchange the process, and with a lot of due diligence, a lot of hard work by staff and our architectural consultant, we feel like we've rendered a good product in partnering with the entire community. And so, as you can see from what activities have occurred through this process, after January 7th, we met with, we did a facility tour, actually two facility tours with CAS for 1500 A.C. We had two focus group meetings with senior populations, one with non-CAS members and one with CAS members. We also had a community input meeting on that very same evening, and then we conducted a park board meeting where we gave all of the feedback in presentation format to park board to get feedback and recommendations to bring before you this evening. And we also had a few follow-up meetings with CAS to work through the proposed layouts. In addition, we also used the PROS Master Plan to take all of the demographically sorted data for the senior populations to ensure that that was factored into this, all of these concepts, as well as a 2021 CAS feasibility facility study. At this time, I'd like to welcome our architect, Stephen Springs, to tell you more about the concepts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's a tough act to follow, I don't have any coins to give out, sorry. I won't belabor this, I know you hopefully remember us from last time, but this is just a slide introducing our firm again. A couple of these slides might look familiar as well, but we like to kind of immortalize some of these things and repeat them a few times. So, I know you're aware of the site, you know, its challenges in terms of sight and visibility. Show you a couple more slides of the facility itself in its current state. So, here's a couple images of the existing facility from the outside and one on the inside. It is an empty shell within, there's not even drywall on the outside walls, it's insulated, but it is, it's a blank slate within, and you can see images there on the left showing the approach, and this is the nature of the building and its potential entrances and parking. From a site plan point of view, it's one of two buildings, but the second one's not built, so you can see the unbuilt portion there on the site across the parking lot from it. It's privately owned, but the city does have a first right refusal should that second facility ever get built in the future. You can see the available rectangle on the south side, that's the subject property, of which is almost all available for development. There's a, the blue sliver you see on the plain east in this view is occupied by a medical office use, but the rest of that building that looked empty, if you will, is the space intended for occupation. Here's another zoomed-in view of that footprint, and a couple more images of that interior space. So, to talk a little bit more about the process that we went through and some of the public engagement, where we were involved in the public meetings, I know a couple of you guys came to the evening meeting. I want to first talk about the focus groups that were held that day before. So, we did an exercise with each of those groups, both the CAS group and the non-CAS group, I guess we're calling it. So, we had two goals for, for the exercise with them, you can see an image on the bottom there that was sort of a worksheet we gave each one of them. And the goal was really twofold. The first one was to talk about the nature of that 10,000-square-foot rectangle that we're inheriting. And we wanted to kind of get that across to everyone that was participating in the exercises and the, and the, and the study, to kind of, to better understand what that means to us. It's a finite amount of space, and while that's significantly larger than the space therein, it's still a limiting factor, we're within those walls. And so, the idea was to kind of get across that idea, if we could do anything we wanted, what would we do? And I guarantee you that any things would add up to more than 10,000 square feet, right? So, it becomes a prioritization exercise as well. So, what we asked them to do was, we gave them just placeholder square footages in a list, said, think of it as money to spend, only you have square footage to spend. If you could have anything on that list, how would you prioritize what would go into that 10,000 square feet? And so, we went through that exercise, took everyone's feedback, and it was, it was fun because a lot of, there was a lot of negotiation going on. Well, what if, what if this room is really this big or that big? And so, that really wasn't the goal of the exercise. The goal of the exercise was to force that ranking, if you will. We would right-size the spaces and design. This was programming, not design. We did the same thing with both groups, so what you see here are the results of those two groups, and it kind of gave us some kind of logical groupings and scoring. So, we used that to, to come up with, and it just happened to be four, four green bars and four yellow bars and four red bars, if you will, but the green bars were the things that kind of rose to the top in terms of, this is what resonated, and we took as high priorities. The yellow bars were ones that were important, but not, not as important as the others, and the red bars were the things that didn't score as well. And it just so happened that both groups kind of had the similar groupings in terms of quantity, and really similar groupings, at least at the top, about flexibility. You can see classrooms and multipurpose rooms, all universally scored very high. It kind of broke apart a little bit more at the bottom, but the other thing that scored higher was commercial kitchen versus catering kitchen. We made it a point to talk about the nature of those two types of kitchens, and what they are, what they can and can't do. And so, we heard loudly and clearly, program space, multifunctional space, and a, and a commercial kitchen. Our evening program was less structured because it was come and go, and I know a couple of you guys were there and participated in this one. So, we couldn't do the same exercise, we had to come up with an exercise where we could get feedback in a come-and-go kind of way. So, I'm sure you guys have been involved in these often termed dotocracies, where you hand out dots, and you let people go put a dot on, on whatever resonates with them. And so, you can see the results of those boards where, these, these were, these were printed boards that were reflective of the presentations that we did for the focus groups. And a number of folks hung around, and we wound up toward the end of the meeting, kind of having an ad hoc presentation where we kind of ran through it with those who stayed. So, the level of interest was certainly very high. So, this adds the dotocracy exercise, if you will, to the prioritizations when we counted up the dots, and kind of juxtaposes it with the focus group meetings. And again, the sort of resonating items were the multipurpose space, commercial kitchen, I would say the fitness aspect ranked a little bit higher in the evening meeting than it did in the focus group meetings. But we took these, all this, and started saying, okay, what, what options might fit based on the feedback we're getting? So, we came up with three options, and I'll show you all these at a little bit bigger scale as we go through them. We kind of came up with the name of traditional fitness and flex, and I'll explain those as we go through the options. But I would also, first, what I would point on this slide that has all of them grouped together is you'll, you may notice that what's different about them is that's plain south portion of each space. So, we approached it as, okay, we heard loud and clear about multipurpose and kitchen, and of course, there's a lot of necessaries, like restrooms and some office space and things like that. We sort of arranged all of those in what seemed like a logical footprint, given the building constraints, and we said, okay, let's make the differences in these, what we do with the space that remains. And then, in these concepts, those are on that southern side of the building. So, the first one, we called the traditional option, and we called it that because it's, I guess I would say, most like what you might see in most senior centers. It's, it's program-focused, we still have that multipurpose space that's common to all these across the top in the yellow, and, and what's on the left with the restrooms and lounge and admin is common to all three, and what's different is the bottom. So, in those brown spaces, we labeled, we made those individual rooms, and the conversation really had to do with flexibility versus purpose-built spaces. And a perfect example of that is, you know, a classroom could theoretically accommodate a lot of different functions, whereas like a game room in this instance is kind of purpose-built. A game room's likely to have, say, a pool table in it, that you can't just move around and move in and out on a regular basis. You do something like that, and that room is kind of built for that purpose. Another example is an arts and crafts room, where you, you need certain pertinences to make that function as an arts and crafts classroom. So, this is example one of three. The next one we contemplated was the fitness option, which kind of grew out of that evening meeting that put a little more focus on fitness. So, we have those spaces in purple where there's, maybe there's a group exercise class, and maybe an open fitness space for individualized fitness. And then, we labeled the third one a flex option, where instead of having three individual rooms on the south, we put another divisible room there, in there, to have, again, more flexibility and programming and scalability of a, of a program. And that one classroom for a game room or arts and crafts, and that was really kind of presented as a what-if. If you had one room that was a dedicated space, what would that space be? We were, we were seeking that feedback. And so, those are what we discussed in the other public meetings, group meetings and focus meetings, and that's also what we took to the Parks and Rec Board for feedback. And the feedback we received from Parks and Rec was, was very flexibility-focused. They said, make it as flexible as possible, because you never know what future trends come along. And then, they kind of got into a little bit more of the design, which we're not there yet, but there was concern about, let's not make it too institutional storage. I've been doing this for 30 years, and I've yet to build a building that had enough storage, because you fill what you have. But, point taken. And they were less concerned with the dedicated spaces, like a billiard room and the arts and crafts rooms, I cite as an example. About that same time, we also got a plan, once the plans were on the internet, you know, then, then people downloaded them and printed them and made their own plan, and we received this plan from the CATS Board, that really kind of focused on, again, the flexibility was, was important, you can see that there's no fitness in that example, but they were very interested in a more centralized lobby and a centralized large corridor in the main space. So, we took all that feedback, and now we have two, two options to show you guys tonight. The first one, I call it the max flex option, so it's, it's much like we started, but instead of having different ways to carve up those rooms on the south, it's basically a mirror of the room to the north. So, each of those yellow spaces is around 750 to 800-ish square feet. So, each of those large divisible rooms is about 2,400, 2,500 square feet. To give you some context, 2,500 square feet is roughly the size of the space CAS is in now, so it's a significant enlargement of the programming capability. We tried to put a little more detail in here, don't read too much into that, is that it's all figured out, but we thought having stuff like furniture in there kind of helps people intuitively understand the scale of the spaces a little bit better. So, there's a couple of potential layouts, depending on if it's set up like a lecture seating or a table and chair seating on the north. But our, this one sought to just, that, that feedback we got of maximize flexibility, this, this certainly does that. It provides either, any combination of six rooms carved up in multiple ways, different programs going on at different times, can happen. And then, we looked at what would the central lounge space might look like. And so, this one, it has the same amount of program square footage, but it's, it's allocated differently. So, once you enter kind of in the middle of the building, it kind of chops some space out, and we looked at ways to try to do a, a similar three, divisible by three room within that footprint, and it didn't really work with a large central space. So, what we did was, we made two large rooms, where they're only divisible into two, and we brought back that, I'll call it classroom, you see it in pink there. That as-yet-undetermined potential, it could still be a flexible space, and as we labeled it, classroom. It could be a game room, it could be any number of purpose-built spaces. One thing we heard a lot about was quilting. I don't know what the quilting contingent is here, but that kind of, that's another example of kind of a dedicated space that that room might serve as. So, these provide the same amount of overall square footage, it's just allocated differently. Instead of, into six spaces, they're proportioned a little bit larger in each one, and there's five, five of those spaces. So, that's where we are in concepts, I'd love to entertain any con, feedback you guys might have on those before I go further.
Councilwoman Rizzo.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, what I liked was the max flex option, but what I didn't like about it was the wall where the dining area was. Why have that middle wall? That limits your space for tables. I would take out that wall and leave an open concept there, instead of having that wall there in that little hallway. I would take out that completely.
Where the, make sure I'm understanding the wall, you're talking about the wall that's along the corridor.
Yeah, I don't have a pointer or anything, but it's a wall, so you have all the tables, and then you've got a wall going this way, and then you've got the other wall, the hallways in the middle. So, taking out that wall right there would be key for me, because now you open up the space. I mean, what the seniors are lacking right now is space for their dining when they do their big dinners. So, taking that wall out gives them a little more area as well there. So, making sure that we don't, walls take space, and that's just a given. I mean, you're, you've got a, you know, you've got your studs, and then you've got your G-Rock. By the time you get done, the wall is taking a lot of space. To have that open concept would actually allow them to have more tables there for their dining in that area. So, taking that one wall would probably be my suggestion, but I love this concept right here, the max flex option, better than any of the others.
Those are exactly the words I was going to use, because you've got room for 100 and something on one side and about 100 on the other, but what if they have an event with 150 people? That was just my suggestion, Councilwoman, to be.
Could we look at doing something like
Could we look at doing something like we have right here where we have dividers?
Yeah, the dash lines you see in those plans are dividers. In the corridor, we could take a look at that. There are existing column lines in there that we were kind of hiding in the walls. So, but we could look and see what potential there is.
To where they're not permanent walls, but we can have it anchored to where you have that same kind of design. But if we need to close off an area, you can be able to use that.
That's what we're showing in the north-south direction. What I'm hearing is can we do that in the east-west direction?
And we can steadily, you know, cover those columns. We do something neat with them. I mean, so it's something we can do, but honestly, what they're lacking is space. And if we're living, right now, they're short of, if we're giving them the same blueprint for dining as they have over here, it's not big enough. Because we hold the Thanksgiving luncheon every year and I know how many people they have. So taking that middle wall out would definitely give them the option. I'm good with having the dividers on the other side, but I think that one concept should just be an open concept completely for the max space on that one where the dining area is, where the tables are set up. It's just my opinion. I mean, it's up to council, but I think that would maximize our space and give them a better blueprint.
Mayor Protim.
Robert, just speaking to that comment, why, like, why do you think that the space is better used for the totality of the community? If, like, let's say there's not a lunch or not something in that room, then you can have three different uses at one time that could be programmed for residents?
Well, you've got the rooms to the bottom that can give you that. Really what we need is open space. When you're looking at parties or anything else that somebody wants in our community, you've now limited to a really small space. We don't have a big space concept. Having that big space concept right there will help everybody out when we're looking at community. The community needs space and we don't need small spaces. We've got that at the Kyle Library. What we need is a large space where people can actually come out and program it right. I think this would give you the best programming for your money.
So am I to understand, though, that these dividers, they fold into the wall, like, can be closed? Can they be closed into the wall, though, as if, like, so they're not visible in theory?
It's pretty typical. They stack in a pocket.
So it still can be an open space, though?
No, the middle walls do. The hallway wall doesn't. It's a permanent wall and we don't need that wall. That's what I'm saying is that that wall doesn't collapse. It's just the ones that have the lines through them. The ones that are the little broken lines, that's the ones that collapse.
So, Robert, were you thinking like increasing, I guess, the space for banquets or small dance areas? Like a little stages for staging? That the walls would be an impediment to let you have more access?
Correct, correct. It's limiting the space and it's taking a lot of useful space. Because now you've opened up this hallway that hinders you, you know, it's wasted space. I just hate to see wasted space in a building. And it's something that's always been a pet peeve of mine, to see wasted space.
Well, that would be my only, I guess, concern with it was, is there room in this design for them to have a small dance stage floor? So if they do have music, you know, if they do have a graduation or a banquet, that can be accommodated.
That would be part of the furniture package, but yeah, there's certainly room.
Because you still have to have sufficient seating and then sufficient floor space to hold the banquet.
So just to clarify, just to ask to make sure that we're all saying, because I'm in complete agreement with Councilor Rizzo, but it looks to me like the maximum capacity for a single event would be around 100.
Then that table and chair scenario on the north, that particular layout is 90. So you're spot on. The lecture-style seating on the south is more like 120. So it depends on the use and the ultimate table and chair size.
Their big events are all food-based. I mean, I may be wrong on that, but that's been my experience is that their large events are food-based. And so if you're at a maximum of 90 for any particular event that they may have or anyone else that might be using it for an evening dinner or something like that, that seems fairly small. So I would like to at least explore what Councilor Rizzo is saying and then come up with some solution that allows for there to be, you know, 150, you know, maybe, if something along those lines. Or at least have that conversation. I think that's important to have. Does anybody else have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree that that's a little small. It is possible that we could take some of the classroom space and narrow it a little bit. Because it looks like it's maybe even larger or the same size as the.
Each yellow box is the same size in this.
Yeah, we could make those slightly smaller and add to the dining large room area.
You do have poles coming in, so you would be going into second set of poles there if you did that. I think that's why they did the room there.
Yeah, this layout is having to make compromises because it's an existing building.
We could actually tie more into the lounge area. If you wanted to make it larger, we could go towards the lounge a little bit and shrink it a little bit.
We can certainly look at how other ways of trying to dance around those columns.
Do we have a number of what we think the capacity that we're shooting for? Because it's clear they're straight off. So as we want to make the dining area larger, we're having to take away from other things. So we kind of need to come up with a number.
And that would also inform the kitchen design. Because the capacity of what you're serving is going to tell us how to scale the kitchen.
I don't want to touch the kitchen. I want to leave it as is.
I think CAS generally, you know, if we could go up to 120, that would not be a stretch. We could easily fill that.
And if I could just get Betty's input real quick, just to make sure, because I'm making changes that you all have been talking about. I just want to make sure.
You got to come up, Betty, and speak into the microphone. And David, do you have something you want to say?
The reason I'm asking her is because she is in charge of CAS right now.
Yeah, I promise I'll give you the mic, Betty. Yeah, so there was some conversation and there's a lot of flexibility into when we start getting into the real design phase. But we even visited the ISD admin building and we saw that even those interior corridor walls, there's some technology where those even collapse. I think your target was ideally like get closer to 200. It's probably more like it as opposed to that. And this other concept, which the CAS group really likes, the centralized lounge, they talked about shifting the lounge maybe to the right, yeah, just toward the doctor's office side. So still gives them the kind of flow they're looking for, but then you can turn those, you know, kind of shift the classroom to the left and maximize room that way. So there's a lot of things we're looking at to meet a number.
Yeah, I'm just worried about that concept. We're taking away seating and that's something that we were shooting for when we went after this building.
We've talked about the extra space and we're one of those ones that took it off the internet and cut it all up. So you don't have what we were looking at. If you look at where all the dining room tables are, you move that administrative lounge to the right and put that other to the left, connect it like an L, they're all open doors. So my room could be 100, then go L to 200. It could actually maximize a lot more space. And then you still have the individual doors here if you want to pull open and have different classrooms. So this one you didn't have.
Well, on the max flex space, you have more, you got closer to 100, over 100 people there. But then you've got the other large room that you could program as well.
But if you do it like an L, there's 200 people.
It's a better floor plan.
And then I still have the classrooms down here. You do, if you move the lounge, the lounge to the right, where that, over on the side by the kitchen type thing? It's in the middle, though. And you move that down and then this, I got to show you this.
So, if I may, Mayor? David, was there a reason, a benefit to what this layout is here versus what Betty is passing here?
I think it's just.
The seating area space?
One was, I mean, obviously maximizing the seating capacity for their larger luncheons. The other thing was, you know, we got to take away from something. So it's like, maybe we don't need a lounge that's quite as large. And so the nice thing is if we, it doesn't change like OPCC very much with either of these options. We just wanted to know and get direction and feedback from you all. They were going in the right direction and we're working with stakeholders. We're just getting into the full design and we're going to, we've promised the stakeholders, we'll continue to work with them through that. But we hear your priorities and maximizing that space loud and clear. The nice thing is if we proceed with timeline and bring something back to you guys, April 1, it's not going to change the cost of the designer's proposal. It's not going to change the timeline very much. We feel like we can still work through these things and bring back what's going to make everybody happy. There's a ton of flexibility. The nice thing is through public input process, we were hearing a lot of the same thing, as you guys could see. And so that was a relief to us, too, because we thought, man, what if we have all these contradictions across the board that are tough to reconcile, but that wasn't the case at all. Even what I'm hearing today doesn't really, and we've been talking with our designer about this, too. It doesn't really intimidate us or concern us. And so we would like to take all your feedback this evening, continue to work with our stakeholders, bring a design contract for consideration next council meeting, and then, you know, take 60 days or so to get their design, another 90, you know, put it out for bid and another 90 days for construction and hopefully have a nice Christmas gift for our senior population.
Be great. Betty, you got a lot of wasted space in this one, too. Sorry.
Can we see it down here?
This has been fantastic. So it's just ideas that we can change later. Like you said, it won't change the cost. So we're just throwing all our eggs there and seeing what cooks.
Sounds good. Just know that we as a DIAS, just know as a DIAS, we're going to, we've heard your concerns. We've been there. We've visited the place. We've seen the numbers. So we're keeping that in our mind as well to give you the best option.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate, I do think that if you end up with a space that only allows for 90 people to have dinner or lunch, that it's going to be a mistake. So that's just, to me, what I would say the priority should be. Councilor Harris said 120 plus is really, yeah, 120 plus. It has to just start with that because that initial primary meeting space with a kitchen and that larger element is, it just has to be there. It just has to be there. Exactly. So let's not do that after this.
Understood.
Let's make sure that that gets solved before anything else.
Would you like us to look for 150, just growth of the city as we continue to add population is a reasonable number to try to achieve? Does that make sense?
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is agenda item number five, provider of report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding an overview of the schedules, cost projections and current status of the 2022 City of Kyle road bond programs. Mr. Trimble.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Trimble, Director of Transportation and Public Works. So tonight, we're going to give you an update on our 22 road bond program. So what we're going to do is I'm going to quickly turn it over to our new GEC program manager, Rick Clatt with Lockner. He'll walk through a program update, project by project, tell you kind of general updates for the program. We'll come back and talk about where we're at on cost projections. I'll walk through that with you. And then we'll also talk about some of our management strategies and approaches going forward to make sure we're effectively managing the program to finish this out and successfully deliver this program for the voters. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Rick Clatt, our program manager.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to present our program update. So with that said, a little quick overview on our outline. We're going to go through some progress made on the program, some project updates, upcoming milestones, some upcoming outreach, program cost estimate update, as well as the updated approach. Some progress made since the last update in regards to right-of-way acquisition. You can see we have 174 parcels on the project. As of right now, we have about 50% of the parcels in the latter stages of acquisition. We consider the latter stages of acquisition being in appraisal negotiations or in possession. Some public outreach that has occurred since the last update. We had several open houses, including the Kohler's De Seton Open House, BB Road, Kyle Lehman, Button Creek and the Center Street Open House, as well as a significant milestone from a PEC agreement that we just recently approved, the council recently approved as the PEC template for utilizing in our utility agreements. Quick update on Marketplace. As you know, Marketplace is currently under construction. We anticipate the current delivery, substantial completion in and around July of 2025. Here's a couple of aerial photos, one from back in December of 2023. And another more recent, 2025, you can see the outline of the roadway and the earthwork going on. Here's just a couple of photos, some roadway work, some storm sewer installation, as well as the construction of the vibe trail. The next project is the Kohler's De Seton Off System, as well as the BV West. Final design and bid is anticipated in April of this year. Contract award in June of 2025 and notice to proceed in July of 2025. One of the things we're doing here is we're actually combining the Kohler's De Seton and the BV West project into a single procurement. The next project is Button Creek. Final design anticipated in May of 2025. Bid in August of 2025. One of the accelerated delivery strategies we're using on this particular project is that the contractor would be managing the utility relocation work. Next project, Center Street Off System, final design in July of 2025 with bids anticipated in August of 2025. Next project is the Windy Hill Project. Final design is anticipated in April 2025 with bids in November of 2025. Old Stage Coach Road, final design December of 2025 with bids anticipated in December of 2025. Next project is the Old Stage Coach Road on the northern end of Stage Coach there, also referred to at times as Six Creeks. Final design anticipated by December of 2025 with bids in and around the 2025 timeframe. Next project is the Center Street On System, as well as Jack C. Hayes. These are both Tech Dot Nexus projects, Tech Dot involved in these. We anticipate final design early 2026 with bid anticipated in early 2026. Other, next project is the Kyle Parkway and Lehman Road Extension. Final design August of 2025, bid in early 2026. We're also looking for additional opportunities to expedite the delivery and possibly bring the bidding phase into 2025. Next project is BB Road East. Final design anticipated in October 25, bid in late 2026. This part, this particular project has over 60 parcels to be acquired. So, and also there's significant utility relocation work. The next project is the Kohler's De Seton Overpass Project, IH35 Overpass Project. This is another Tech Dot project and final design anticipated early 2027. Bid in mid of 2027. One of the accelerated delivery strategies we're doing is refined Tech Dot coordination approach utilizing in the Estes Group, which I think Michael will mention earlier or later in the presentation here, as well as considering starting the actual PSNE design process prior to having received final schematic plans, final approved schematic plans. Upcoming milestones, kind of going through Q2 2025, you know, reaching final design in Windy Hill and Button Creek, as well as going to bid for Kohler's Seat and Off System and BV Rest. Some Q3 2025 summary here is reaching final design on Center Street, Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Extension, and then as well as going to bid on Center Street Off System, Button Creek Road, beginning construction on Kohler's De Seton Off System and BV West, and as well as opening the Marketplace Avenue project traffic. Some Q4 2025 milestones, reaching final design on BV Road East, Old Stage Coach Road North, as well as Old Stage Coach Road, and then going to bid on the Windy Hill Road, Old Stage Coach Road North, the Old Stage Coach Road, and then beginning construction on Button Creek Road, as well as the Center Street Off System. Some upcoming public outreach. Number one, ongoing, continuous updates to the website, enhanced social media and milestone events, and then as well as communication planning. We have two events coming up on March 25th. We have an open house for Old Stage Coach Road. It's going to be at the Wallace Middle School. And then April 10th, we have a general road bond town hall at City Hall. This will include a panel with a question and answer type format, as well as providing general information on the overall road bond program. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Okay, thanks, Rick, for the project updates. Now, I'm going to walk through our. Now, I'm going to walk through our cost projections, and a couple of things to note about this. There are, it's 4% cost escalation that's built into the projections, and then there's a 10 to 20% contingency to account for any unknown unanticipated factors. And so it's always impossible to know exactly everything you're going to hit when you go out there to construction, and particularly when you're further back in design. And so that contingency captures all of the unknowns, the unaccounted for, and makes sure that we're just capturing those in the budget going forward. The other thing I want to mention is these cost projections are an estimate in time. They're just what we know right now. It's based on our best information to date, where we, where we're at in design with all of these projects, and any information we have on actual bid items, what we can expect to see from contractors when we go to bid in the marketplace. And so these numbers will get more refined as we move forward further in the program, move forward with projects, and actually get to construction. Our best information on actual construction costs is actually getting that bid back and getting the actual construction started. So we're going to have that opportunity coming up in a couple of months when we get that Kohler's to Seton and the BV West project bid together. That's about $50 million worth of construction that's going to be going to bid. So we'll know in a couple of months where we're standing in the marketplace with actual costs, and we'll have better updates to these cost projections going forward. And then we note some of the cost controlling strategies, but I'm going to get into this in a minute after I talk about the projections. So just to kind of go through this real quick, and I'll talk about some of the different, the changes, what I call the deltas, the variance between the original budget and the projected budget. And so right off the bat, I'll start with the big number. You know, overall, we're about $39 million delta right now, overall budget from program cost to the original budget. But let me walk through just what, where some of those differences are. One, let's talk about design. So the original budget was 20 million. Right now, the projected cost is about 31 million. It's about $11 million difference. A little bit of good news on that, though, is we are pretty far along in design on several projects, so a lot of those are known costs. And so again, we, we know a little bit more where we're at with costs. There are some things that we've had to account for in design, any changes to scope, anything we've added to the project, any upgrades to water lines, or making additional adjustments for utilities, all those things obviously add to scope. And so some of those things are factoring into design costs as well. Some good news on right-of-way, we're actually running right on budget with right-of-way. So that's actually good news, and I know you guys have seen a lot of right-of-way items come to council recently. Utility relocation is actually under budget by quite a bit. And I think some of that was we thought that the program would be burying the cost of a lot of utility relocations, and fortunately, we're able to get that through a lot of partnerships. And so that's brought, brought the cost down on utility relocation. So right now, we're projecting that cost to be lower than expected. Construction is where our largest delta is. Right now, we're projecting 204 million versus that 131, and I'll talk about where some of those big changes are, project by project. And then the contingency is actually running a little bit under than the original budget. So that's also looking good from that perspective. So where we're seeing the, the big differences on the construction costs, Kohler's to Seton, that difference there, and then BB Road, and that includes BB Road West and East, the largest part of that variance is actually on BB East, and we'd mentioned, or Rick had mentioned, that there's a lot of right-of-way acquisition and utility coordination in that. That's driving some of those, again, estimated projected cost differences that we're seeing. And then Old Stage Coach. Old Stage Coach is about $20 million difference. There's been some additional drainage work that we've had to do on that, and there have been some other upgrades we're looking at as part of that project, and that's probably one of the largest deltas in the construction. But again, point in time, we'll be looking at that going forward. We'll, we'll know a lot more with that, those bids coming out. I also want to note that we have a projected cost participation from Tech Dot, about $8 million. Potentially, that could be more. That was just an estimate. We still have, have a lot of coordination in front of us. And Rick mentioned that we're going to be hiring the Estes Group. The Estes Group has a lot of experience working with Tech Dot. They've actually worked on their program management teams for the MI35 program. So we're hoping that we can get some better coordination with them, accelerated delivery on, on the overpass, and then also hopefully some better cost participation working with Tech Dot as well. I've already mentioned some of the design cost changes and some of the added scope. Again, those items, all those things add to the scope, add to the cost, and then eventually add to the schedule as well. And then I noted some of the projected cost changes. Again, anything that's added to the scope adds additional quantity of materials, additional cost to those estimates for construction. I mentioned some of the positive cost trends. One thing I want to come back to is that some really good news is Marketplace. Marketplace is our known construction bid item, and that came under budget, and that's great news for us. And so we're hoping that we see that trend continue as we get that Kohler's to BB bid in, in a couple of months, and the subsequent bids. And again, but that's a really good indication recently of what the market is telling us it costs to get this type of work done. So again, a little bit of good news for us, but we'll continue to monitor that going forward. So let me talk a little bit about some of the management improvements that we're looking to instill. I've been working very closely with the new Program Manager, Rick Clatt, to look at how we're managing the program and see what we can do to shore things up in, in short terms. So I mentioned Rick Clatt is new Program Manager. He's bringing a lot of good experience onto the program team. We have streamlined the program team to where at the leadership level, it is Rick, it's me, and it's Amber, and it's Brian. So it's, it's very much one point of contact. We've gotten that information out to all of our teams that, hey, everything needs to go through us as far as any key decisions, any changes. Also, we're having very much of a change control process, so to speak, for the program. We're also looking at the scope of the GEC. We'll be working with Rick and Lochner KFA to look at their scope. And so what I anticipate is bringing back a revised scope and fee and a new work authorization in May. And so we'll do that work over the coming weeks and bring you back something with what that new scope looks like. But what I want to do is make sure that we're streamlined and we're doing just what's necessary to successfully deliver this program going forward. I mentioned the contract with the Estes Group, and again, with their experience, we think that's going to help us greatly in the coordination with Tech Dot. You know, that project that's hanging out in the schedule is that Kohler's overpass, and so we think there's an opportunity to bring that back in the schedule, and hopefully, again, get better cost participation from Tech Dot on that and bring money back to the program, which we always want to see in a program like this. Also, the outreach team, Gap Strategies, is now reporting directly to me, to the city staff. And so we'll have more direct oversight of our communications and outreach strategy. Rick mentioned that we are shoring up our communication strategy. We want to make sure that we're getting good information out there, updated information, good education about the program and what's going on in the program, and just providing that transparency that you expect that we provide to the community on this program. And then cost management strategies, one of the things we're going to do here in the next week or two is sit down with our teams, and we're going to, we're going to scrub the budget. We're going to go through all the projects and see if there's any opportunities to find things where we can not reduce scope, not change, or not do something in the program, but just are there any things that we can do to contain costs? Maybe there's something where there's a better way to do it, there's a better approach, and there's ways that we can streamline. And again, anything that saves schedule right now saves cost. And so that is a cost containment strategy. It's honestly our best one. The sooner we can get out to bid on these projects, the sooner we're going to have certainty in our costs, and that's going to give us better costs going forward. We're going to closely watch scope creep, and again, we have a change control process now. So as those requests come in, we'll assess those and see what those impacts are to the scope and schedule going forward. And for those things that we feel, you know, are value and that we'll bring to council, obviously you see those coming forward, and where those are a result of good coordination with utilities, et cetera, you'll continue to see those, but just know that those are going through an evaluation process now on the program management side. I mentioned looking at bid prices, and then again, accelerating construction schedules, just trying to get out to bid in construction as soon as we can. We're looking for any opportunities to do that. Managing that is a day-by-day process, managing costs, and then trying to find ways to accelerate schedule. And so we're focused on this. I've spent more than 60% of my time since I've been here focused on this program, so I commit that we're, we're going to stay focused on this going forward. I mentioned some of the accelerated delivery strategies. I think I hit most of them. We talked about having the contractor joint bid with utilities on, on projects. We'll look for opportunities like that going forward as well, particularly for those projects that are further out in the schedule. And again, some things that we're doing now is that we have up there moving straight to 60% design. What does that mean? So in design, as you are probably familiar with now, there's a 30%, 60%, 90%, and 100% design. That's kind of the general timelines and milestones that we follow on design of these projects. So moving straight to 60 just means that for that 30%, we're doing an informal review, just doing, looking for fatal, fatal flaws, so we can move to that 60% and then, and then kind of forego that formal, that formal process. Why can we do that? Because typically, you are looking at adjustments of alignments and everything, but you're doing a lot of that full evaluation of that in 60%. And so that's just a way that we found that we can streamline time. We're not going to lose any quality in that. It's just a way for us, again, be efficient with time. The time it takes to review projects, when you go back and forth between city team and consultant teams and design teams and all of that, it takes time, right? It takes a couple of weeks here, a couple of weeks there. That's how we add months to the schedule. So we want to streamline those processes wherever we can, because again, that's going to save us money going forward. Right-of-way acquisition, there's already been a lot of great work on this already, and I definitely want to recognize the work that Mayor and Council has done on this to support our program going forward. Brian, Amber, everybody who's involved in this process, it really is taking a village to get this done. But again, we want to make sure that we are being sensitive to property owners, working with them effectively. We'll continue to try to do so going forward as we work on these properties and land acquisitions. We did hire a land acquisition manager to help us to just manage that process. It's a lot of information going back and forth, so we're working with them to do that. We're working with outside council as well, and, and to, to help us with all those reviews, as you know. And then, as I mentioned, we have kind of reviews up and down the line on those. Again, I think we're trying to make sure we're taking enough care and attention with getting these acquisitions done and working through the, the process effectively. And then I've already talked about interagency coordination, and again, I just want to give Mayor and Council a little credit. On March 4th, you passed a PEC agreement. It probably didn't seem like a big deal at the time, but you basically passed the template for how we're going to set up the utility relocations with PEC going forward for all of our projects. It's going to save us a lot of time on those projects, so thank you for that. And so we're going to use that template, work that into the projects. Again, that's just one of those strategies we have for accelerating delivery, and I had mentioned the Tech Dot partnership, and we have a couple of projects that we think that we can leverage the Estes Group to help us with on that. So with that, I think that's our update. I know it was fast, so please, any questions you have?
Well, I just want to say that that's probably the most comprehensive and inspiring report that we've had since the beginning of this program. That showed a lot of confidence. I'm very excited about it. I know we have some issues, but may I approach him, or Councilor Rizzo?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mike, great job. Look, honestly, one of the things, why we're moving so fast, and the public needs to know this, is because we're on a time crunch. Bond dollars do not increase, but the price of construction, the price of land acquisition, everything goes up when you're trying to build a project like this. The longer we take, the long, the more that we're going to have to sacrifice dollars from another source. So staying within the budget of the bond is really, really important to us. So we're going to do our best to honor that. Mike, great job to you and your team for putting us back on track and putting us on a good timeline, and just letting you know that it's not that we're trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes. We just, we have timelines. We got to, we got to beat if we're going to get these projects going. The wreck yesterday, this morning was probably a big indicator on how bad we need other artisuries throughout our city. We need the roads, they're important. Pretty soon, we're going to have construction all over the city, and we're going to ask for the public's patience to please be there, and because it's going to be real important. I mean, we're going to need it. We're going to get a bunch of emails, and we understand that, but when the job is finished and the roads are there, it's going to, it's going to be great. It's going to reduce the time that when you hit the City of Kyle to your home is going to be a lot shorter than what it is now, and that's what we're hoping on. So just, I just want to say how happy I am. You've made me really excited with your report and just continue to work. There were some concerns here earlier. Let's make sure we address them, especially the wall. That's something I think we could probably do in-house as a city. As we're doing design, we probably have some contingency dollars that we have set aside, so we could address that and talk to the neighbors. That would be great. And at the end, just, we, we definitely need these roads, they're important. So connectivity is something that we've been striving for as a council for a while, so hopefully we can get that done. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilor Zink.
Thank you, Mike. That was very, really fast and thorough, but I can, I can sense your, your urgency in this. It's, it's really important that we're watching the spending here. So we are $40 million about over the budget, right? Is there any way that that could potentially decrease if we get faster on the construction that's going out until 2028? Is there still a chance of that, I guess, to, to be closer to the intended budget?
Yes, Councilmember.
Is that what you're trying to capture here?
Absolutely.
To not let it run away?
Absolutely. And that's why I was mentioning, this is a dynamic process to manage a program like this, and so we're going to try to pull these projects back in the schedule, you know, sooner, and that's going to save us, that's going to save us cost on, on the project. And so we're hoping that's going to be an effective strategy for us. Quite honestly, it's probably our biggest strategy is to just get projects, projects out to bid sooner. And again, I'm very encouraged by the, the bid items that came back on the marketplace. That's great, but we want to get some more projects out to bid here in this window. You never know what happens in the marketplace. And so the sooner that we can get projects out in this window where we're seeing good, good cost, bid costs, that's going to help us overall. But we're, we're looking at any strategy we can to accelerate delivery, bring projects back into the schedule, and yes, any strategies that we can, we can look at to reduce cost without sacrificing scope, without sacrificing the projects and what we're trying to get done.
So with getting new, I guess, more, more help from consultants, this will help you to have a faster way to review surveys and appraisals that are, that are needed that might be slowing down us getting to those phases that you need?
Where it makes sense, yes. And so again, I know I went fast. One of the things that I didn't mention, that I do want to mention is that, for example, on the BV East, we mentioned that there's a lot of right-of-way acquisition, right? And so surveys take a lot of time to do as part of the right-of-way acquisition, as you, as you know. And so we are actually supplementing our survey forces on that project to expedite surveys, so we can start to work through those parcels and those right-of-way acquisition process quicker. And so we're looking for opportunities like that for any of these projects going forward, where it makes sense to, to supplement consultant staff forces to move things forward, if that's going to help us to expedite, and we'll, we'll save money, you know, much more money than we would just spending that, that extra time for, for the consultants. We'll look for those opportunities. And again, that's what I want to look at, sitting down with our team over these next several weeks.
And I just wanted to point out last point, that it seemed like you were hitting really well on all the numbers except the construction costs. That's the one that got really high there, but everything else you were meeting, designs, right-of-ways, contingencies within your, what we had amount, and then where we are. So that's good job looking at those numbers there.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, and the thing I would say also too about the cost is what this does, this estimate does right now is it, it gives us where to focus on right now, right? So our highest delta is construction, so we're going to focus a lot there to see what we can do to shore that up from either schedule or other cost containment strategies. And so again, I'm encouraged by some of those other categories, but I don't want to get too excited about those. I want to keep an eye on those and make sure that we're, we're delivering as promised there and also managing costs.
Councilor Tubby's?
Yes, thank you. I guess when you look at the construction costs, I mean, I think, I think we're all exposed to it, just driving into Austin every day. There's some major construction that's going on on our highways, including in San Antonio, other areas, and so I can understand where we're trying to meet that. So, but going back to BB Road East, it is, it is encouraging to see that some of these numbers are 25, 26, because some of the last updates we've seen were a lot of the construction was starting at the beginning of 2027. So I'm starting to see the numbers kind of start getting more realistic, and that tells us like what Councilor Rizzo says, we're about ready to start hitting some major construction in the city. But going back to BB East, I know that a lot of the delay probably is going to be the right-of-way acquisition and the utilities as well, because just so that, there's just a lot of poles that are out there, and I know they're going to be buried or looked at, trying to get with PEC, but I know that there's other companies that have those wires that belong to, so I'm sure we've got to let the residents know it's just not the electrical cables that we just bury. It's, it's other companies that we have to get involved with, correct?
Absolutely.
To be able to bury, to be able to bury those lines, which does take time. And then once you get all the way from BB Road, all the way past Gulfport, the question is, on Gulfport, have we, is it going to be a roundabout in that specific area? Because you know how it curves, makes that awkward-looking curve, and then it, you can either just make a left or right. There's that question that, you know, we still got to figure out. I'm sure there, there is going to be there. But once you get all the way up, I think it's past High Road is where it ends, where[1731.21] it begins to get with the county, correct? Have we, have we reached out to the county and said, okay, Tag, you're it? Going forward, what's their plan? Because I know if we're going to have a nice, beautiful road with turning lanes, and to want to get up there, have they discussed of what their plans would be from there all the way to 21?
So yes, Councilmember, we reached out to Hayes County. As you mentioned, a lot of their projects literally butt up right next to our projects in their 2024 bond program. So we had an initial coordination meeting. They're still starting up on their bond program. And so we're going to get into a regular cadence of coordination with them on these projects. And again, we do want to make sure, to your point, we want to make sure there's consistency in the improvements that are happening from city to county.
Yes, because a lot of the traffic from 35 that goes east is for people who live in Yulin and Lockhart, because that's how they coordinate. And then 21 is starting to become another major highway. So it's making sure we're keeping, keeping up to date with county and where we're at, because that's where a lot of our cross-traffic comes into play as we're going east, because everything is going that way. And then you've got the, the construction of 130, so of course, 130 is going to be the next I-35. So it's making sure we're, we're coordinating everything going east on that end.
Absolutely, Councilmember. And I will mention too, that we anticipate bringing back the contract for the Transportation Master Plan here in the next couple of weeks. And so that will also be another opportunity to, to do that coordination with Hayes County, Tech Dot, and others to look at our entire system. And I definitely am a strong believer, we are part of a system, and so we need to look at how it's all working together.
Exactly. Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Additional comments? Yeah, just, you're, you're right. I want to say, like, for example, Stagecoach Road, for those who've been around for as long as I have, I've been advocating to try to get Old Stagecoach Road reconstructed since I got here in 2016. And then the initial back-of-the-napkin cost estimate was $7 million to do that project. And then we waited a little bit and it went to 15 million. Then we waited a little bit more, and it went to 30 million, and we waited a little bit more, and now it's at, what is the number, 60? So that's what happens when, when, when you allow for time to just pass by. And so there is a sense of urgency, and I want to give kudos to you, but in particular to our city manager, Mr. Langley, because to put together a $300 million road bond program, it's aspirational from the dais, it's something that we're committed to. We know the community is asking above and beyond anything else for us to focus on our roads. And we have been working for years to do that. And in, in, since the passage of the 2022 roads bond, we've really struggled to get the traction that we feel like we need to start delivering these projects that the voters have approved. Now, for the first time, I can see how those projects are going to be delivered, and it has to do with, with you, Mike, as well as Mr. Clatt and, and others. But that starts at the top with, with Brian. You have been very focused on not just short, taking shortcuts. You've been focused on building the infrastructure of people that are required to deliver a project of this magnitude, and you are doing it, it's very clear. So I just, you, you deserve kudos for that. And you're obviously doing a great job leading this organization. This is the most important thing that we do. It's certainly at the top or near the top.
Thank you. Well, I make good hires like Mike, and so we're working good as a team, and it's, we're all working very hard on that, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate the confidence, I appreciate the leadership that y'all are showing right now. Please continue to do that and look for ways to maximize our dollars and get that, get that budget back under control so that we can deliver every single one of these projects without having to do what we did in the 2013 road bond program, which has dramatically reduced the scope of projects. Four lanes go to three, and then three go to two. We do not have the sidewalk infrastructure that we initially wanted. We did not even budget for right-of-way acquisition or utility relocations. It was a disaster in terms of project delivery. And I believe that we're on, we're on our way to doing something different here, and so I'm excited about that.
We'd best not to thank the county as well for including us to their bond as well last year to, for dollars for our road projects as well, so it's important to recognize them as well.
Awesome. Anyone else? All right, thank you. I think y'all aren't going anywhere. Next up is agenda item six. Receive a report, hold discussion for staff direction regarding the traffic analysis and alternatives for Old Stagecoach Road as part of the 2022 road bond program. Mr. Trimble?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mike Trimble, Director of Construction. So you mentioned Old Stagecoach, so we're going to give an update on Old Stagecoach. And in particular, we know there's a lot of construction going on. As you know, this project has several segments to it. We know it's going to be an impact on the community. There's no getting around it, you know, a lot of construction happening at, at one time. But we did want to look at options for how we phase this. And so what we're going to do today, Rick's going to, Rick Clatt's going to walk through some, a couple of different alternatives we've looked at, and then look at some of the travel times related to that, but then also talk about some of the outreach we'll be doing along with this. Because one of the things we'll be doing at the project and the programmatic level going forward is trying to get out there early and often with the community and talking about what's coming and what they can expect, and getting their feedback as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick Clatt.
Thanks, Mike. Once again, Rick Clatt, delighted to be here to go over the Old Stagecoach Road construction phasing. A little bit of background, as you all know, but for everybody else that may not know, this project is essentially divided into five different segments, beginning with on the southern end, Center Street On System. And then you've got the Center Street Off System portion, and the Old Stagecoach portion in blue there, as well as what we're calling the Old Stagecoach Road North section. And then the final section is the Jacksey Hayes Trail on the northern end. So what we're looking at here today is to try to come up with the fastest path to delivery. Requires, you know, construction of multiple segments at once. So we've got a couple of options here to look at, you know, two different alternatives, and we'll go through that in, in great detail on the next slide. Obviously, the, the construction of the project will require detouring of Old Stagecoach Road during construction, and there will be some construction travel impacts throughout the corridors. So we're going to be looking at two alternatives. First alternative is to bid the projects independently as the design is completed. So we would get the design done, and we would take the, put together the bid packages and go out to bid and construct the projects sort of independently. Another alternative too is to delay the, the bid of some projects until later in the construction phasing to minimize the traffic impacts during construction. So I'll go through that. There was two projects that Center Street On, as well as the Jacksey Hayes Trail, which would be the ones that would be held until later to try to minimize the traffic impacts that would exist. So going through alternative one, I'm going to take you through each one of the steps here. Alternative one will begin by construction on Center Street Off System as the first project, including the, the roundabout on the western end of Center Street. And then steps two and three, we would begin the Old Stagecoach Road construction, as well as beginning the Old Stagecoach Road North construction, while the, the work on Center Street Off is still ongoing. Next step under alternative one, we would begin the, the Jacksey Hayes work, as well as beginning the, the Center Street On System work. Once again, those would be beginning while we're still completing the construction work on the other three segments of the project. Next step up in quarter three of 2026 is we would complete the Center Street Off System portion, shown here on the, the green section. And then the remaining four segments would still be currently under construction. And then in quarter two of 2027, we will have completed additional sections on Old Stagecoach North, complete the Jacksey Hayes section, as well as complete the Center Street On System. And then finally, we would complete the Old Stagecoach Road section of the project. This would conclude the construction in, in quarter three of 2027. This next slide here is just sort of an overview of the, kind of the schedule of each of the five segments. As you can see, the, in blue there, that's the Center Street Off Section portion, which would be the first one to go to construction. Actually, that would be the first one to go to construction in either of these two alternatives. And then as you can see, the rest of the projects have, pretty much are all overlapping as far as the construction and under construction at the same time. Next, I'm going to walk through kind of our alternative two, which is basically deferring those two segments that I mentioned until later in the construction phases. So in quarter four of 2025, once again, we would begin by constructing Center Street Off System portion. And then we'd move into beginning construction on Old Stagecoach Road. And we would be completing the Center Street Off System portion while we still have work ongoing in the Old Stagecoach Road, as well as beginning work on the Old Stagecoach Road North portion. In quarter two of 2027, we will have completed the Old Stagecoach Road North, while the ongoing work on, on the Old Stagecoach Road section is still ongoing. And then we would complete the work on basically the three projects shown there in green, which would be the Old Stagecoach Road, Jacksey Hayes, as well as the, I guess, we'd complete the Old Stagecoach Road, as well as beginning construction on the Jacksey Hayes, as well as the Center Street On System projects. In quarter two of 2028, we will have completed the Jacksey Hayes, while the Center Street On System is still under construction. And then quarter three of 2028, we'll complete the Center Street On System portion. So as you can see here, we've got the Center Street, once again, Center Street Off System in blue, is the first project. And then we would have the Old Stagecoach Road, Old Stagecoach Road North projects under construction at the same time, but we would be deferring until a later date the final two segments. And please note that the, all projects substantially complete by the end of quarter three, 2028. So we wanted to take a look at the, kind of the travel time, the potential impacts to traffic under each of these two alternatives. So what we did is we went ahead and we analyzed the existing condition using peak hour data, and we looked at the three segments of the project. The first one there in, in orange, RM 150, Veterans Drive. And we also looked at the travel time along Old Stagecoach Road, and also looked at the travel time along Center Street On System and Center Street Off System. We evaluated travel times during the worst-case construction for each of the two alternatives, alternative one as well as alternative two. And then we used that, and we predicted the travel time in each direction for each segment. For the travel time analysis, our results indicated that under alternative one, we increased the travel time by approximately 23% from existing. And then alternative two, with the deferred construction on Jacksey Hayes and Center Street On System, we increased the travel time by approximately 17% from existing. Under both alternatives, the travel time will increase, we anticipated increase. However, we don't see a significant increase between alternatives one or alternatives two. Here's just sort of a summary table of the results. As you can notice, the, once again, the percent delay under the alternative one and alternative two are shown as 23% on alternative one, and then alternative two is 17%. Some additional considerations to take into account, under alternative two, the projected cost construction price escalation is $770,000. So going back to the price escalation and going to construction as soon as we can on these projects, deferring the Center Street On, as well as the Jacksey Hayes portion, according to our estimates, will have a, a impact and increase in construction cost. Under alternative two, the overall construction duration is extended by 15 months. So once again, 15 months before the entire set of projects is done under the alternative two. So much longer duration and also escalation in the construction costs. You know, while these projects are, are ongoing, we understand that there's going to be significant impacts to the traveling, you know, public. And so what we're going to do to try to mitigate that is inform citizens, businesses, you know, emergency services and local schools about the upcoming work, traffic changes as they may occur during construction, and any potential traffic impacts. We're going to accomplish this by a series of public meetings, as well as meetings with residents, kind of a one-on-one neighborhood groups as well. Send out newsletters, email, website, social media updates, as well as the appropriate signage, variable message signs and such out in the field during construction. And we will, we will listen to the, you know, feedback that we get in terms of the traffic control, and consider making adjustments and make the adjustments that are necessary to try, try to mitigate those concerns. So sort of an analysis summary here between the two alternatives. Under alternative one, all projects would be delivered in the quarter three of 2027. It would increase on average the travel time by 23%. There would not be any additional cost impacts over that of alternative two. Under alternative two, the projects would be completed in Q3 of 2028. This extends the construction and potential travel time impacts by 15 months. Also, the increased travel time would be 17% from, from the existing. And then I talked about the inflation impacts of approximately $770,000 on the project. So options today that, that you all have to consider and provide some guidance is to proceed with alternative one, where we're bidding each project as the design is complete to expedite delivery. And then proceed with alternative two is another option, where we delay the bid of some of the segments, the Center Street On, as well as the Jacksey Hayes Trail, until later, to try to minimize the impacts to construction. And then with that, GEC and staff recommend that you select alternative one, from, not only from a cost standpoint, but also from a time savings in order to deliver these series of projects 15 months earlier than alternative two. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mike to sum up.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. And just a quick wrap-up, and thanks, Rick, for walking us through that. As Rick mentioned, the reason we're recommending alternative one is because as in the prior presentation, you saw, I mean, moving, moving a little bit faster, accelerated delivery saves us costs on the backend. But also, on that analysis, that time delay is incremental. And so in alternative one versus alternative two, in alternative two, you have a little bit less delay, but it's longer. It lasts 15 months longer than the other alternative. And so we feel like all those factors considered, we're recommending moving forward with alternative one.
Anybody have any comments?
Well, I like those analysis, Rick and Mike. I think that's pretty, pretty good to give us that option of one, save time and money.
Councilmember McKinney?
Yeah, I'm kind of just crunching some, some minutes here, and it looks like there's, for every hour of drive time, there's about a three to four-minute time difference between alternative one and two. And when you factor in that an additional 15 months to save that three or four minutes, I mean, residents lose significantly more time sitting in traffic. I mean, alternative one seems like the no-brainer here.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda item for alternative one.
Second, all right, motion by Councilmember Rizzo, second by the mayor, that we approve alternative one. Is there discussion on that motion?
I would just like to say, can we get that kind of analysis on the next roads, like when they start coming up? Like, so that we can make that decision of save the time versus, you know, moving faster?
Absolutely, Councilmember.
Thank you.
One, and also to that point, can we, can we get a lot of this information put on the Kyle Bonds website? I mean, that's, the, the information we just got is, is fairly comprehensive, and I'm not sure that the, the website is up to date on all that. I know you're already working on it, but I want to hear, hear from you that that's a commitment.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And any presentation that we make to the council will, will go on that website, so there'll be a complete accounting of all those discussions that have been having. Yes, sir, we'll get that updated.
Okay. Councilmember Tobias?
When it comes to notifying the residents, I know we normally put out a Facebook posting, and I know we put that out on newsletter, but can we also look at maybe doing an alternate way, like going on Channel 10? Because there's people, everybody has TVs, and every now and then you'll flip the channel, and then there's City of Kyle. But at least it can give some people, hey, as of today, today's this date, this is the roads that are going to be under construction, these are the routes that you should take, and keep it in more real time as we continue on. Because if people see that on a repetitive basis, they can be able to keep up to date on that end. Flyers, you, you know, Facebook and other things, just something to think outside the box on that end.
Absolutely, Councilmember. And in my experience working on programs like this, particularly when you have projects of this scale, with this much construction happening in this timeframe, you want to get out early and often to the community. And so one of the things we're looking at is what I'm calling kind of the Pardon the Mess campaign, is we're just going to have to have a variety of methods to communicate, get information out about what's coming, having those conversations. But we can look at those options too, about how we're getting information out, pushing information out.
Even if it's making a video, and it comes on Facebook, and it's a Facebook post like we do with the Grinch and everything else, but it shows, hey, everybody, this is road bond, BB Road, this is what's going on. These are the delays, these are the times, these are the detours, you can take any questions, you know, save it from, go from there on that.
Yeah, and also, we're on, I think April 10th, they're planning to do a panel discussion similar to what we did when we were getting ready to go to bond, so that we have all the experts up there talking. So that's April 10th, and that's a good, it'll be recorded, and then we should be able to put that, that, that panel discussion on Channel 10 and YouTube and all the, all the platforms as well. All right. Any other, any other discussion? Fall as a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, now we're going to All right, now we're going to start getting things a little bit out of order, but if there are no objections, I'd like to bring up the historical commission item and then after that we'll do the PCN items related to stagecoaches and others. All right. Do we have the agenda item 23 to pull up? I have a, I'm going to try to make it quick. And y'all, y'all don't get too excited about this layout because it's just what PowerPoint threw together in their little thing. So it was, it was about 30 minutes worth of work on this part. So as Ms. Johnson and Ms. Knight discussed, the city of Kyle really is in need of creating some method to the madness of how we preserve our history. This, this item for me, it started about five months ago when, you know, I was trying to do some research to find out, to find some photos of the ribbon cutting of this building, City Hall. I had heard stories about the ribbon cuttings. I'd seen certain artifacts from when it happened. I knew based on some notes that I'd read that there were a lot of different groups here and I was not able to locate any of those and the city wasn't able to produce those photo, photos. And then that started me saying, well, what else do we have? What, what, what other, you know, documents and photos do we have access to? Only to find out that in, in reality, we really didn't have much in terms of historical documents. And if we did have documents and photos, they were, they were going to be very hard to find. I also wanted to do some deep dives on our minutes and I realized that we have some upgrading and modernizing to do with the minutes. I wish I could hit clickers. Can we go next? You can see, by the way, that's Kyle City Hall and the old Kyle City Hall as well. One, that's now the Krug Activity Center. The other is a building that does not exist anymore. So, oh, yes. Oh, wonderful. All right. So I'm, I'm just want to be brief because this isn't the actual ordinance. I want to bring that back and I want to get y'all's feedback because I've spoken to everyone on this dais, I have relationships with all of you and I know every single one of you supports the idea of preserving and amplifying Kyle's history. So, but we need your feedback on how to do this. So my initial thought was to create an Historical Archives Commission. And the reason for that is we have over 1,400 boxes of documents and ordinances and blueprints and you name it. All of our, all of our information is in 1,400 boxes in a storage unit essentially. And it's very difficult to know what's in those, what's of relevance, what's something that deserves to be celebrated and what does not. We have, there are photographs and a variety of stories that the city itself, the administration does not have access to. And as Lila pointed out, that's in, those are in newspapers and the Haysfree Press was very thankful, thankfully, they were very helpful to me. These, here's some of the boxes. Imagine 1,400 of those in storage, Old City Project, City of Kyle Box Eight, 1979 to 2004. There's a lot of information, a lot of work to do to go through 1,400 of boxes of that. Here's an image of city council meeting. They used to be recorded, Minerva Falcone used to record them on cassette tape with a cassette player. And if you, it took me four different attempts borrowing three cassette tapes players, none of them which worked. Mr. Langley gave me one, did not work. Mr. Rizzo gave me one, did not work. I got one from my wife's grandparents, did not work and I had to finally buy one.
I, I think it was just too, you just didn't know how to use it.
Probably so.
You're too young. That's what it was.
Probably my fault, I was too young. I'm not that young. I was raised on cassettes too, but I'll let that slide. But it's, it's really cool. This is recorded voices of Mayor Atkins as well as Troy Bearden and a bunch of people you never heard of if you, if you haven't studied Kyle history, that were sitting there making discussions to turn the city of Kyle into a general rural city. And I just would absolutely love to be able to have that available, not only for me to put it into a cassette player and hear it, but to have it digitized and modernized and published for all to see and be able to experience. And then other researchers down the road who want to learn more about Kyle history to be able to go online, as Lila was saying, through the form of an archive and be able to have public access to these documents. This is one of the items I found in storage. This is a 1968 as-built survey of the city of Kyle. You can see on the bottom left there, the locations, existing structure, September 1968. It was very difficult and y'all don't please, nobody give me grief over how it was laid out. We were very, very careful, but it was rolled up and it's been rolled up for 60, 60 years. We need to, we need to uncover these, we need to put them on display. One of the most unique things that I found out, number one, Lila and I found a street that was misspelled and it has since been corrected, but on this survey it was misspelled, Teal versus Thiele or something. Another one was right behind the Kyle Elementary is the street that's, I think it's now called Schlemmer, but at the time it was called Buda Street. And Lila, who has looked at all these different street names through the years, never, never seen that street. And so the question then becomes, how does that street get named Buda Street? And then also what happened to it? And it'd be kind of interesting to find that story as well. Here's some, this is from, I think about 1961 in the bottom. This is a, an image from the original Kyle Community Library that the Johnson family graciously donated money to help bring about this facility. And we have tucked away, it was in a, it was in a file that I found that said something related to employment, just completely misfiled. And then there it was, all of a sudden. And Lila and I have been bonding a lot lately over this and she calls it like jackpot, you know, like you just, it's like finding gold when you're digging for it. In the top right, you can see that we've preserved some, a lot of documents related to the bicentennial celebration of 1976 and 1977. The top middle there, you can see, which is the original drawings of the floor plan of Old City Hall that they were trying to raise money, they raised it by the way, to renovate it, all through private donations and through the bicentennial commission. And they had people send in information and stories from all over. They had the president of Texas A&amp;M University come, Mayor Pete Krueger raised up a flag and took it down. There was presentations made. It was just an incredible thing, an incredible event that only a very few cities get to actually legitimately participate in and you have to do a ton of work to make that happen. And they all did at that time. And we have some of that information, but it's not on display for people to see this great piece of Texas history and Kyle history. Here are minutes from 1941 to 1956, meeting minutes. That's pretty impressive. It's also called volume four. So far, we have not found volumes three, two, and one, but boy, maybe, wouldn't it be cool to find that in one of those 1,400 boxes? In the bottom right-hand corner, you see a, a March 3rd, 1942 regular meeting, meeting roll, call to order by Mayor Kretzmeier. It goes on, motion made by Williams and Howard, that air raid wardens be given power of attorney, power of city marshal during air raids. Imagine, you know, the history of the city of Kyle where these people are sitting down talking about the air raids, thinking that there's a possibility that there could be bombings over the city of Kyle and having to deal with that. And here it is, the original pen, pen writing, and I need to get this completely out of my hands and out of my office and in the hands of someone who will preserve it forever. And that's really what the entire point of all of this is. So once I realized that the city of Kyle could not produce very many photos of Kyle history, I talked to Cindy Barton and I also talked to Ashley Continiere, the new editor of the Haysfree Press. Cindy and her family historically have owned and published newspapers. We found out that in 2008, or she already knew, but I found out that in 2008, they had a break in and they lost one of their important servers that had a lot of their historical data. And the only place that, that a lot of that data existed or even potentially existed was on stacks and stacks of CD ROMs that had data discs on it. And so for weeks and weeks and weeks, I worked one at a time, I pulled an old computer out of the library that had a CD drive and they graciously gave it to me and worked with Cindy and with the Haysfree Press and with Lila and other people to start digitizing all of those photos and old historical documents. But it was a lot, it was more work than I could handle. But so far, we've accumulated over 200,000 photos related to the city of Kyle that are on drives. But those photos need to be curated and then they, they need to be checked for accuracy so that the stories that they represent are told accurately and then published. And so trying to handle, here's, clearly I didn't finish this slide. Here's one, I mean, look at that. There's a, there's a picture that, that was taken of Seton Hospital going in to existence. This is council meetings and charter commission meetings from the late 90s and early 2000s. You can see Mayor Atkins in the, in the top right as well as Stuart Kirkwood, who's now on our Charter Review Commission and Debbie Munoz and a variety of other people that are here talking about becoming a general rural city. That building over there was the place where city, city council meetings happened for decades. And at one point, they very nearly tore it down. And so in order to make sure that those kinds of considerations don't take place moving forward, I think it's important for us to not only unearth this history, but make it available to the public. There's Mayor Atkins and former council member and former mayor Todd Webster having a spirited discussion. You should read the minutes from these meetings. They were pretty interesting. Lila was there at a lot of them, so she knows. Here's a candidate forum where you have a lot of different people. There's Stuart Kirkwood, you can see Becky Salbaro, John Ortonio, Chevo Pastrano Senior, who we've discussed. There's Matty Broadfoot on the bottom right as well as, as well as others. A lot of history to be brought out and celebrated. Here's the Bon Ton burning down. That's where we currently are. There are a bunch, if you look down, you can see, I just took, these are just, I have the pictures, but you can see all the different photos that the Haysfree Press took in a variety of different evolutionary processes. And there, there it was. The only evidence that this building actually got built was, that I've found so far is taken by Cindy Barton sitting right out there. There are the, there are the pier and beams, the red iron being put up right there under the Kyle Water Tower. And the picture on the right with Mayor Gonzalez, that is not the ribbon cutting for City Hall, but it is one of the first events that they had in the new City Hall. Here's Mayor Gonzalez handing Mayor Atkins a ceremonial gavel to honor him for over seven years of service as the mayor. These photos are, the, the city didn't have them. Top right, that's groundbreaking for what is now the James Atkins Pool, but at the time it was just the Kyle Swimming Pool. And the bottom right, that's 1906 construction of Old Kyle City Hall. And the stories about that just go on and on. You can see, here's, here, there's Dan Ekikitis and Becky Salbaro where they're advocating to have our police become civil service. And that was a major, major moment in Kyle history. Top right, there's, you can see Jeff Barton, Cindy's husband, who was a commissioner at the time. There's David Salazar, you can see Beth Smith. You can see all kinds of different people, pretty much everyone from the city's past and present, cutting the ribbon to make the old bank building that no longer exists, the home of precinct two, which is now over on 2770. And then in the bottom right, is Pedro here? All right. In the, in the bottom right, there's the, the old police department. That's, I think their third home, by the way, expansion. So they, at the time, were thrilled to be there, even though you can just, if you remember what the old post office building was, that amount of officers couldn't have even possibly fit in there. And yet there they were happily making that happen. These, these items deserve to be celebrated. You can see at the top left, that's the, the button fire station on the east side. Top right with Congressman Doggett as well as Councilmember Herval and Mayor Lucy Johnson, Becky Salbaro and David Wilson and, and others, they're breaking ground on the library. And, and just on and on down it, the list it goes. And so there's a lot, a lot of Kyle history that we need to celebrate and I just, I want to see it preserved and I know that we do too. And so what I thought would the mission of the Historical Commission could be, would be to unearth, organize, digitize, preserve and publish a city archive. Think of it like a single website of some kind where you can go and do lots and lots of research, where there are stories being told of all different kinds of characters in our past who were here and who made an impact. And also the second and very important element of the Historical Archives Commission would be to recommend a records retention policy, to make sure that we're not just thinking about state statute and following statute with records retention, but we're also filtering the information that we are creating through an historic lens and making sure that we're preserving the things that matter regardless of whether or not the state says we have to. And then the third element that I thought of would be to promote and celebrate Kyle history. So essentially as, as we're gathering all of this information and coming into, and, and finding, you know, unique treasures, like I think at some point in the past, the city of Kyle had a founding plat. I've read the stories about it. I can't imagine anyone threw it away and City Hall is not burned down. So is there a chance in those 1,400 boxes that we're going to find the original plat or the original deed where it was transferred over? And can we put that on display and celebrate it? So I thought that the Historical Commission, the Historical Archives Commission could be in charge of having a Facebook page and really having, telling stories and hosting events officially sanctioned by the city of Kyle. So that's pretty much the idea. I was thinking maybe something like a five-member board. I'm open to any and all suggestions. I'm not trying to hold anything close to the chest. Want to make sure that we have the right amount of staff support such as the city secretary's office, maybe the library as well participating. And then we also give resources to it so that they can do what needs to be done to digitize, like for example, turning those cassettes, you know, into online digital versions so that people can listen to those council meetings and have those published. We want to make sure that it gets the funding that it needs to do all those things as well as 1,000 other ways that they may want to preserve and promote our history. So with that, I'll turn over the floor to anyone that wants to speak. Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you for bringing this forward. And look honestly, when you said you wanted to learn about Kyle history, I didn't know it was to this extreme. So great job unearthing a lot of things. You brought back a lot of memories. I, I remember the Bon Ton when I was being born, bicentennial, I mean, I was just a little boy back then, I was like seven years old. It's pretty awesome. I mean, we, we've got a lot of our history in boxes. It's kind of sad. I mean, it's really sad, but I would love to see it come out and people be able to access it, to be able to see what Kyle, when they move here, what city am I moving to? Look at the history. That tells you the city you're moving to. Our history tells you who Kyle really is. And when we're looking for a mission statement, look at the entire history, but we can't do that because it's in boxes. I mean, it's, it's great that we're, you're bringing something like this forward. I definitely fully support it. I want to make sure we give the entire history though. I mean, we can, we know that sometimes history books are one-sided. I want to make sure as a city, we don't follow that process. We tell everybody's history in the city of Kyle. Everyone who served, everyone, every resident, everyone that made an impact in the city of Kyle, their story should be told. So I definitely support this and, and thank you for bringing this item forward. It's, it's long overdue. So thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Tobias.
Great, great idea. So what is your idea to do a like commission board like we, we have with library and everything else, maybe a five-person and, and go through the process of taking applications and following through and then doing the interviews and selecting the panel?
We could, but I also like the idea of, of making sure that the board is, is, has a certain degree of expertise. It's really important. So just because you, maybe you care about history doesn't mean that you're capable of fulfilling this mission. So it's, it's, it's a, there's a technical element to it. It takes a lot of time. You have to have time and energy as well, but you know, like a, you know, liaison from the Haysfree Press or someone who like, if Lila would be interested in serving, she is an expert. I don't want, she doesn't have to apply, in my opinion. She deserves to be on that board from the beginning or any, any others who really have that sort of bent towards being able to, and, and skills to, to do the job. But I don't know. I mean, certainly some members of the public too, but you know, maybe a member of the Texas Historical Commission Board, for example.
I agree with you to where you can be able to develop some form of policy to where you say, this is the mission of what this commission's about.
Yes.
And then they can also branch off and go to the, get with maybe the Texas Historical, I mean, the Case County Historical Commission or maybe get with the university and try to pull up to see if you can be able to match specific stories and do research if you have to go there as well. So yeah, I support, I fully support that idea, sir. Like a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead. a motion? Sure. Okay. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 23 in the concept of the ideas of continuing with the boards and commissions' process and policies.
Motion by Councillor Tobias, seconded by the Mayor Protem, that we approved Agenda Item 23. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, sorry. I haven't you haven't gone. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say thank you for bringing this forward. I remember when we had the discussion, you were really excited about what you found and you were sharing it with me and asking me if I knew some of the people in the photos. And I can only tell you some of the events that I remember and some of the places. And I think we have lost some of that history because possibly we didn't we don't have a museum. And maybe that's where those kinds of things get stored. But I think this is something that could be very beautiful for our city to and for new people who have moved in who maybe don't remember the things, the bon tons and the Kyle Library and the Fire Station. So I think it's a beautiful project. I think it's it's very worthwhile to invest in and to put the right resources and the right committee together to honor it, right, and to do a great job with it. And I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to to really research that and to find the things that we had lost, because it will tell us the future that our city is going to be once we think about the past that we've had. Right, guys?
Because you you we always talk about the city. And I had this question, you know, what is our identity? You know, what is Kyle's, what is Kyle about? And it can go back to this. It's the people. It all starts with the people, the the families, the residents, the people that live here. And it grew from there as far as the communities. So it'd be good to be able to do all that research and be able to find the names, match the photos, and tell the stories. Basically, that's what we're doing is we're telling the story.
Just to follow up, Brian, IT would probably be a good resource for this group and also our communications. While we're trying to document all this, I think their skill set would probably be crucial for this if staff could help out as well.
Right. I think the libraries can really help with the organization of the information and then bringing in the other resources from IT and any other department that we need. Leslie Scott and her team have some expertise there, and we can help them kind of spearhead that.
I wasn't excluding them. The mayor had already mentioned them. So I did a little bit more.
We'll be glad to do that. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, Lila, do you do either y'all have anything you want to come up and add as far as just counsel or advice for us as we start this? Not trying to put you on the spot. It's fine if you don't.
Thanks for the reminder.
Yep. So just for the record, she said maybe she should meet with the city manager and that you have a Hays County Historical Commission meeting coming up. And so there'll be some further discussions. We just would like for both of y'all to be involved because you're you're both subject matter experts at preserving history. And I think hopefully you understand maybe even better than we do what we're trying to do here, like the mission of this. So I hope for both of your involvement, if you'd be willing. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank y'all. All right, we're going to bring up the next is Agenda Items 19 through 22. And I think Amber has presentations to go through on all of it. So I'm going to read out all four items to bring them up. And even though we have to take individual votes. All right, next up is Agenda Item 19, Consider Approval of a Resolution Finding Public Convenience and Necessity in Authorizing Use of Eminent Domain to Condemn, if necessary, a 2,388-square-foot parcel of land in fee simple, as described in Exhibit A to the resolution from certain real property owned by MDC Coast 10 LLC for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements for Jacksey Hayes Trail. And then Agenda Item Number 20, Consider Approval of a Resolution Finding Public Convenience and Necessity in Authorizing Use of Eminent Domain to Condemn, if necessary, a 2.51-acre parcel of land in fee simple, a public utility easement over two parcels totaling .480 acres, and a water pipeline easement over .2734 acres, all as described in Exhibits A, B, C, and D to the resolution from certain real property owned by East Cannon Partners Incorporated for the purpose for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements and public water utility infrastructure improvements for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Extension Project. Agenda Item 21, Consider Approval of a Resolution Finding Public Convenience and Necessity in Authorizing Use of Eminent Domain to Condemn, if necessary, a 3,472-square-foot parcel of land, as described in Exhibit A to the resolution from certain real property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association, Inc., for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements for Old Stagecoach Road. And Agenda Item 22, Consider Approval of a Resolution Finding Public Convenience and Necessity in Authorizing the Use of Eminent Domain to Condemn, if necessary, a 375-square-foot parcel of land in fee simple, as described in Exhibit A to the resolution from certain real property owned by Hometown Kyle, Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association, Incorporated for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements for Old Stagecoach Road. Ms. Smites?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Smites, Assistant City Manager. For the record, as the mayor said, we have some PCN resolutions for you to consider tonight. This one in particular talks about the Jacksey Hayes Road Bond Project. We've talked about it a lot tonight. We are going to improve Jacksey Hayes Trail from Veterans Drive to north of Witty Road. Here's a little background on the project. The design features were approved by the city council in January of 2024. The task order to Pape Dawson to complete the final design was approved in October of 2024. So to acquire right of way needed for the roadway, we completed a survey and we performed an appraisal. And the property interests include a fee simple right of way, which is indicated here on in green. And if you're unfamiliar, this particular property is the 711 at the corner of 150 and 2770. We need to acquire about 2,300 square feet of right of way. Fee simple means we're purchasing, and it's for the construction of of the project there. And just a reminder on what a public convenience and necessity refers to involves the council determining whether the city's acquisition of an interest in property is necessary to effectuate a particular public use. And in this situation, we do find that the Jacksey Hayes Trail project is necessary and required to promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. And we have been in negotiations with the property owner. When we able when we are unable to reach a negotiated agreement, this PCN authorizes the city to initiate eminent domain proceedings, if necessary, to acquire the needed property. So your options tonight are to approve or deny, and we recommend option number one. Are there any questions about that?
Go ahead. I think we're good.
Next presentation, please. Okay, this is a parcel on the Kyle Parkway and Lehman Road Extension. Background on this project, the alignment and design features were approved by the council in January of 2024. We had a task order to Cobb Finley to complete the final design approved in March of 2023. This is Kyle Parkway Parcel Number One, owned by East Cannon Partners. We need right of way for the roadway. We performed the survey. We performed the appraisal. And now we need to acquire the property. It's fee simple right of way, a public utility easement for drainage purposes, and then also the water pipeline easement where Arwa will go. And just as a reminder, the council does have a possession and use agreement here. For the right of way, we need 2.51 acres. For the drainage improvements, we need 0.48 acres. And then for the Arwa Water Line, we need .2734 acres, shown in yellow here. And again, this is just a summary of what the PCN does for the project. Next presentation, please. This PCN is for the Old Stagecoach Road. We have two resolutions for this particular project. It will improve Old Stagecoach Road from Center Street to Six Creeks Boulevard. Here are the project limits. The align and design features were approved by council in January of 2024. We issued a task order to Pape Dawson to complete the final design, and that was approved in September of 2024. So again, we prepared the survey, performed the appraisal. We need fee simple right of way here. And you can see that as indicated in the green strip. We are asking for 3,472 square feet of right of way, indicated here on the survey. And then here is the other parcel that we need. It's shown in green there as well. It is 375 square feet of fee simple right of way. And again, another explanation of what a PCN means for where the project's options. Any questions?
Just a couple of points to clarify. I was reading some of the comments on the Hometown Kyle thread, and there were comments made that said that that this process would be a sidestep of having to actually pay for the road by using eminent domain, that we don't actually pay for the road. And I just want to get your comments on that, that that's not what the process can if you want to speak to the process of
Right. We have Kent Sack.
where we're at on this. And if we're not in agreement on the price of the road, which we can't speak of here under confidentiality, but that there is a process for adjudicating that price and that that process is ongoing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kent Sack, outside council assisting the city in real estate acquisition. So these PCNs are just, these PCNs do not mean that the city is actually going to file an eminent domain suit. It just authorizes the city to file an eminent domain suit. The acquisition process the city follows in every case. It tries to treat every landowner the same. It has a appraisal performed under Texas condemnation law, assessing the fair market value impact of the taking. It extends an offer to the landowner. The landowner has 30 days to respond to that. If they're not able to reach agreement, then a final offer gets extended, and there's another 15 days to respond to that. The city does carefully consider all counteroffers that are made. The city has to weigh those based on factors that are compensable under the law, the city's litigation realities, and of course, project scheduling. Only when those things seem to not be working out is the city actually file a condemnation suit. Once a suit is filed, yes, the court appoints a panel, and they're called special commissioners. The special commissioners hear evidence from both the city and the landowner, who may present whatever evidence they wish. And the commissioners reach a decision, and that decision is what the compensation is. So there there is no acquisition where the city pays nothing.
And can you can you speak within the bounds of what you can say publicly about the process with the the two Stagecoach parcels and where we're at? I know you said you maybe you've had some communication recent on that.
Yes. And as you've observed, we shouldn't talk about the particulars, other than to say the parties are significantly far apart in in terms of of percentages. I will say that the city, the city won't actually file an eminent domain suit until the negotiations are completely completed, until the city's response has been communicated to council for Hometown Kyle.
So what then would be the advantage of doing this now as opposed to waiting before we take this vote?
As in the as in the prior presentations, I'm sure the council has a sense for just how many acquisitions have already happened and how many are to come. Each one of these acquisitions takes a significant amount of time to do. So this was just the timeframe for this one in the process. There's only so many special commissioners in Hays County. There's only so many hearing settings. There's there's so many more acquisitions to come. It's necessary to keep the process rolling to meet those those timelines that were set forth earlier in the
So just to reiterate, you are in communication with the Hometown Kyle representative, that they have an attorney that they're working with, it's a counterpart?
I am. I am in touch with Hometown Kyle's council. In fact, I have a phone call scheduled with him in the morning.
Okay. And so that that's going to be an ongoing process. And that there is going to be considerable time to be heard and go back and forth. Council will see this item again as you negotiate in theory, if there is if there are substantial updates?
Yeah, absolutely. There have been multiple acquisitions in the last year and a half that sometime after a PCN is passed, but before a suit is filed, the city will reach resolution with the landowner. Sometimes after a suit is filed, but before a hearing is scheduled, the city reaches resolution to with the landowner. The city is always evaluating every counteroffer to see if if that makes sense, and it can be justified to avoid litigation. It only resorts to litigation where necessary.
And can you speak to how many parcels that we have acquired on that Stagecoach that stretch already are acquired or are in negotiations with roughly? Do you have some ideas of what just so that everyone can understand what we're dealing with on this road?
I don't know how many parcels are on Old Stagecoach altogether, although someone else may.
Yeah, I don't know the particulars, but it was in the presentation for the road bond. It was charted out. But if you recall, we have 173 parcels to acquire, and we're at 50% of those in the latter stages. So, you know, half of those, we've already been through some of the process to acquire.
And these would be the second and third that the council has considered PCNs on for Old Stagecoach Road. There's already one that's in the litigation process that's going to go to hearing next month.
Okay. So obviously, I would just say that the hope is that we can come to an agreement on all this without having to go through that process. But we need to, what you're saying is we have to establish this process in order to make sure that we're able to hit the timeline so that we can build the road, and it doesn't end up costing us.
Correct. The preference would always be that the the parties can work it out by themselves. And if they can't, there's a process in place that the property code is set forth. Some municipalities can build public projects on time.
And that process doesn't mean you pay what we tell you.
Absolutely not. We either reach agreement, or there's an independent panel of special commissioners that make a determination. And if the parties don't like that, then they can appeal and have a jury trial.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Sack? Councillor Zuma?
Thank you, Amber. So listening to some of the resident concerns, and it's understandable. We're getting close to their neighborhood with widening the roads. So what what kind of, I guess, countermeasures are we taking as a city to ensure that we still have adequate safety when we get closer to encroaching to the backyards? Do we have curbed redesigns? I mean, what designs do we take into account before we butt up next to, you know, these roadways and neighborhoods?
That's a good question, Councilmember Zuma. So I'm I'm not advised on the the designs. I'm there. That's strictly from the the road designers.
And just to be clear, it's not just this neighborhood. There's going to be other neighborhoods as we're widening these roads. We need them for safety and walkability. So I just want the residents to hear what 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 mitigates do we look into when we're getting close to these backyard neighborhoods?
Yes, Councillor. Mike Trimble, Director of Transportation, Public Works. And so RGE C. Rick Clapp may want to speak to this as well. But when we have roadways, we're looking at that buffer zone between the roadway sidewalk and then any any residential. And so we are looking at that. And we do assess any safety concerns with that. And like, for example, I know there's some examples of like roundabouts getting too close to neighborhoods, or the roadway getting too close to neighborhoods. We do evaluate that as part of the design going forward. But we're always happy to look at any specific issue that's brought to our attention.
So higher curbs, things like that can help butt up against the create a barrier, right?
Typically, you know, curbs help, buffers always help. That the first the first line of of safety really is to have a good buffer and have, you know, a good sightlines, all those types of things, good markings for drivers, you know, so drivers know when to slow down, all those types of things. Good speed design, good road design also helps. So, you know, folks are driving 70 miles an hour on a road that's meant to be 30 miles an hour. So things, all those things go into the design of these roadway projects.
I guess there's a there's a balance between a barricade can also be a danger. So you got to look at the pros and the cons of that. And obviously, a ditch can be a dangerous situation as well.
Absolutely. We don't want to trade off one safety issue for another when we're doing this design.
Anything else you want to add, Rick? Or did he cover?
I think he covered. I guess you you kind of hit the nail on the head there as far as the safety. It's a balance, right? We're trying to look out for all aspects, be it the neighborhood, the homes, as well as the traveling public. So we take that all into consideration and, you know, making our recommendations. So.
So the distances that we're going to have here are, I guess, the standard is feasible for road design in these distances that we're in?
It's feasible. Obviously, you know, we're we're in a situation that's pretty tight from a right of way standpoint. So, you know, we're trying to minimize the right of way acquisition. I think at that particular parcel, you know, we're not going into the fence line, right? We're taking property up to that existing fence. And so it is tight, but we have that appropriate offset from the actual curb of the the roundabout to the to the sidewalk and everything. So.
So it goes it goes roundabout, then sidewalk, then fence?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a great clear answer.
Just kind of counter off of that, because that's what we were hearing from the residents. You know, that's their big concern is that, you know, the traffic's going to be in their backyard. I mean, how close it is is coming to. And I want to make sure that we can reassure them that if we go this route, because we do need to be able to improve our infrastructure, that we're not encroaching on that danger zone for zone for their families and so forth, especially in that area. And so I think we just need to really take in consideration the design itself and make it a standard across the city. You know, if we're going to be doing, of course, we're going to have to be looking at the city as a whole. We're going to be, the roundabout is eventually coming, and I know I've got reservations on that, but in certain areas, I do support it. But I think as long as we continue to look at the area itself and take only what we need, but continue to have at least a buffer on that end. And then the second thing, as long as we're in communication with the owners of the property, and we can try to come up with an agreements on that end to have an understanding, you know, we can, we can eliminate all that and just, just move forward on that end. And maybe you can answer this, on the east, in the, when it comes to the vibe trail in this area in Hometown, is it built more on the east side or on the west side? And how is it going to affect the area on that end?
Yeah, as far as the vibe trail going up, I guess, Stagecoach is actually on the east side of the road, so.
East side of H, of the Hometown Kyle?
Yeah, the sidewalk itself is on the, on the west side.
Okay, right.
One thing I do want to add, Councilmember, just as, you know, because I know when we're looking at sometimes these property acquisitions, you're just seeing that line. And so that right-of-way includes all of, all of what we're talking about, including in this bond program. So it includes that, that roadway, includes the sidewalk, includes all those public improvements, any utility easements, all those things are included in those lines. And so I just want to make that clear, that when we're talking about that, that's the full cross-section of what we're building out. A part of that is a roadway, but then there's all the other improvements that are included with that.
Do we have the schematics there for that, where the public could see? I'm not saying right now, but I'm saying, is that something that we have available where we could, we could show the residents exactly what it looks like?
Make them feel comfortable, yes.
Yes.
Mayor, we're happy to meet with the Hometown Kyle personally. They can reach out to me, and we can schedule a meeting and go over the maps with Rick and his team, Mike and his team, and talk to them about the impacts and go over the details of the road construction.
This is part of the problem.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm very sorry, but a couple of things here. Number one is that we're talking about, we're talking about two, two separate issues. One is the acquisition of the right-of-way, and two is the design of the road. Considerations for things like improving the fence to make it a more. I understand, but what I'm talking about is that's a, that's a different conversation. And when it comes to this particular item and right-of-way acquisition, we have very specific rules we have to follow, which is why we have to go through it. I mean, I have very specific language I have to call out. It's all, it's all attorney-client privileged because it's a negotiation, and the negotiation team is here, but we have to follow those rules. That said, outside of that, there are opportunities for us to have robust discussions about the design, about making sure that we're considering the angle of the vehicles and the sidewalks and the lighting and the safety. All of those things are items that we can consider, but we have to consider those in a different form, in a different setting than what we're talking about here. And so this, this team is very committed, and I know this council is very committed to making sure that that, that road design is going to work for everyone. And I know that sometimes the people who are closest have the most potentially to lose, and so there's conversations that need to take place. And so I just want to say, let's, let's continue to have those conversations. As I mentioned, on April 10th, we're going to have a large road bond open house and panel and forum. We're going to go through a lot of that. And then we're also going to be, and we have been doing it, and we're going to continue to have those discussions, project by project, in different neighborhoods that will be affected. So some of those discussions are still to come. And I know there's probably nothing I can say to satisfy everyone at this, at this point in time, but I just want you to know that we are trying our very best to make sure that not only we're transparent, but that we are responsive to the community as we're building this road. Mayor Proten?
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiment of the mayor in terms of how I believe that most of us up here feel in regard to the safety of the homes and your kids and anyone who might be affected by the expansion of this road. I wish we could have a more robust dialogue about it now. I would like, before you leave, to give you my information, and we can connect after this to do that. But, you know, I just want you to know, as you sit here, that, you know, at least I can speak for myself, I, I'm committed to trying to, you know, hear and see exactly what you're talking about to figure out a solution.
All right, any further discussion?
Mayor, I do, I do just want to mention that we do have an open house specifically for Old Stagecoach next week. On the 25th, it's from 5:30 to 7:30 at Wallace Middle School, and we'll have the schematics, and we'll have an opportunity to talk through any issues with residents.
Okay, so that's next week, March 25th?
Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday.
From 5:30 to 7:30 at Wallace Middle School.
Wallace Middle School. All right, that's a good opportunity. Thank you for that. Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to read through these motions. All right, this is on Agenda Item 19. I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 2,388 square feet of land in fee simple from property owned by MDC Coast 10 LLC, as described in Agenda Item 19, for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements for the Jacksey Hayes Trail.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Zuniga. It's their discussion on the motion. Roll call, vote.
McKinney?
Aye.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Hyzer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Our motion passes seven to zero. Next will be the motion on Item 20. I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 2.51 acres of land in fee simple, a public utility easement over two parcels of land totaling .480 acres, and a water pipeline easement over .2734 acres of land from property owned by East Cannon Partners, Inc., as described in Agenda Item 20, for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, utility improvements, and public water infrastructure improvements for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Extension Project.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Zuniga. It's their discussion on the motion. Roll call, vote.
Harris?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Hyzer?
Yes.
McKinney?
Aye.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next will be Agenda Item 21. I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 3,472 square feet of land in fee simple from property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association, Incorporated, as described in Agenda Item 21, for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements for the Old Stagecoach Road project.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Harris. It's their discussion on the motion. Roll call, vote.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Hyzer?
Yes.
Tobias?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Harris?
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. And finally, Agenda Item 22. I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire 375 square feet of land in fee simple form from property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association, Inc., as described in Agenda Item 22, for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements for the Old Stagecoach Road project.
Second.
Our motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Harris. It's their discussion on the vote. Roll call, vote.
McKinney?
Aye.
Hyzer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Now I'm going to recommend that we take a short break. We're going to call it seven minutes. We'll reconvene at 9:45. Thank you.
Are we going to go to?
All right, the time is 9:49. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. All right, we're going to go back now to the consent agenda, have requests to pull, agenda items eight and fourteen and twelve. Does anybody have any other items they wish to pull? Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve consenting agenda items number seven, nine, item number ten, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen.
Motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember McKinney that we approve consent agenda items seven, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fifteen is the discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item eight, consider approval of a resolution adopting the Kyle Public Library Policies, library use, membership and library cards, circulation, tech share card, interlibrary loan, customer confidentiality, internet and computer use, collection development, display and exhibits, gift and donations, study rooms, meeting, community rooms, Maker Space, lost and found, and American Library Association principles. This item is presented by Ms. Scott. Councilmember Tobias, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. As a liaison to the library board, one of your members, and the reason why I just pulled this is because I know when we did an interview with some of the new board members to get them on board, they were looking at trying to review the policies and so forth. Were there any changes that you want to make, address, or if everything's still the same? I'm just curious to know how the process went. Is everything okay and so forth?
So, Mayor, Councilwoman Scott, Library Director, there were some adjustments. We did not have an official policy packet such as this. We did have a couple of other items that they were, that were brought to you last March, and some of those changes included consistency of language such as the word "customer." Traditionally in libraries, sometimes we use patron, we use resident, and so we stuck with common languages such as the customer. We had consistency with age, such as the age of 12 years old seemed to be a nice landing place for being alone in the library, asleep in the library, attending some of the events alone in the library. We discussed, trying to think of a few of the things, hygiene and attire. We looked at programming. I'm sorry, did you have? There was nothing major changed as far as those. We had legal reviewing this as well. We looked at our benchmark cities to see what our other libraries had for policies as well. Trying to think of anything. There was nothing really major that we changed other than just the consistency to be aligned with best practices, ALA, TLA, the Texas Library Association, protocols that are pretty traditional.
And the reason why I was just bringing that up, because I remember the last director we were here, she had been talking about trying to do the same thing because there had been a lot of changes coming towards the libraries themselves from a political standpoint of what books are acceptable and not acceptable, and those were the ones that were, you know, concerning. But also, you're right, there wasn't really a policy in place as far as the conduct in the library and hours. And I'm guilty of sleeping in the library before when I was in high school, you know, I was supposed to be studying, you know.
So I'm glad you have that there. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that as you developed this new procedure, this new policy, was there any, any kind of changes or anything new that was brought to this thing?
Good questions. As far as collection development, because you did bring that up, the one, the one thing we did change had to do with positive reviews, and we did have a robust discussion about that where the previous policy had two positive reviews, and we did lower that to one, and that has to do with many times children's academic books will not have multiple reviews. So we used the example during the library board of a book about whales. You might only find a school library journal put out a positive review on that, but you would not find perhaps a book list or a curricus put out a review, but it's a great book, maybe published by DK, Best of the Best, but you, you still want to be able to add that into our collection because it shows value and relevance to our community. So there was that one as well, as far as collection development. We added quite a bit to it, some things that are coming up, our hotspots for our community to check out, the Maker Space, which is happening very soon. So there were, there are some additions to this that would have never been mentioned in the past that are now part of our present and future.
Great, great, great. Well, good. Those were some of the questions that I had. If anybody else doesn't have anything, I'd like to call Mayor to make a motion to approve agenda item number eight, adopting the resolution for Kyle Library Policies.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember McKinney that we approve agenda item number eight. Does anybody have anything they want to add? All those in favor say aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item twelve, consider approval of a resolution for Parks and Rec co-sponsorship with Kyle Radio for the Central Texas Community Radio Conference. I pulled this item at the request of Councilmembers Rizzo and Harris, who I believe have something that they could say. Councilmember Harris?
I'd like to state that I will be recusing myself on this item. I am a board member on Kyle Radio. This is an all-volunteer group. No financial or other benefit is accrued for my service on this, or on this action.
Councilmember Rizzo.
I will recuse myself because I'm a board member as well, and I have no financial compensation on this board, but I am recusing myself on this item.
All right. I don't really have anything to add. It seems like a fairly straightforward item, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Our motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda item twelve. It's the discussion on the motion. Councilmember McKinney?
I would like to point out that there, I mean, this is just a sharing of event space basically with the, with the Parks Department, and there's no operational funding or anything like that being between the city and the radio station.
Okay.
There's been some concern from residents that, that we're creating a state-run media, and I just want to assure that that is not the case.
All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries five to zero. Next up, agenda item fourteen, consider approval of a third amended and restated interlocal agreement for mutual access to cloud library digital services. This item is Ms. Scott's, pulled by Councilmember Tobias. Councilmember Tobias, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, just one, could you just give us a brief summary of what the cloud library is? I know we already have an agreement, but just to let the residents know some of the opportunities that, what it's going to provide for us, because I was reading over, it's pretty interesting about how many, how many stories and data collections you have. And then the last question would be, is, it says the cloud library content counts towards Texas State Library Archives. Does that include the university for students to use?
No. So, would you like me to go through the slides really quickly? Okay, so again, Leslie Scott, Library Director, Council and Mayor. So the, the way that this works is that the easiest way to explain it is OCLC is the digital provider, Cloud Library is the product, and Cloud Link is our consortium that we belong to. So it gives us basically the door to this amazing digital content. The membership purpose is to further expand public library collections, and our application to join the Cloud Link was the first step, and that was unanimously voted upon back in January. So the cost in funding, we actually already have the funding in our budget, which is awesome news, but the digital content, we promised to purchase $10,000 minimum. Our staff training is $1,500, Cloud Link fee is $1,000 annually, the subscription $2,000 annually, and all this funding again is covered in this current budget. So our current library offers a couple of digital connections, Libby with approximately 30,000 items, Boundless with 15,000, and Hoopla with approximately 30,000, but those items are pay-per-use. Libby is just, we purchase the items inside of our consortium, and then we all are using those items in. Cloud Library is like that, and they have pay-per-use. So the possibilities with the Cloud Link is over 500,000 digital items available for our library patrons to use. That is amazing. And along with a much larger library is the wait times. Right now with Libby, we have long wait times because there's only so much sort of buying power, if you will, inside that collection versus a larger collection means there's going to be a shorter time for that, that new release, that very popular item. And then the Cloud Link does count towards our Texas accreditation for the state library. So with a, with a connection like this, highly likely we will ever be in any kind of jeopardy of losing accreditation due to our items per capita. Digital does count towards our items per capita, and you have to have one item per capita, and our capita is not the city's population, but it counts a portion of our county because we receive county funding as well. So I think our, did, our population right now is 76,000, not the, not the city. So we're doing very well. We're doing very well. So, any other questions?
No, that's, that's good to know, so that way Council couldn't understand that we have accreditations with the library through the state that we have to keep up with. And by having this digital format to where we can offer more books, audiobooks to our residents, we can be above the standard on that end for the state on, so I'm very excited for that. And of course, it's already in the budget, so that's, that's really not, not an issue for me. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to go and make an approve, a motion to approve agenda item number fourteen.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember McKinney that we approve agenda item fourteen is the discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Library.
All right, next up is agenda item sixteen, consider approval of a resolution accepting the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024. Mr. Mohit, we're happy to see you coming up here, Pervez. We've been missing you.
We missed you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, for the record, I'm Pervez Mohit, City's Director of Finance. This is going to be a real quick, brief presentation. We're going to talk about the acceptance of the annual independent audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024. So very quickly, I'm going to cover what is required in the city charter, highlights of the city's financial position as of the year-end, about the city's independent auditor and their role, about the independent audit report itself, types of audit reports that can be issued for audits of city governments, and the type of report issued to City of Kyle on its financial statements, and then we'll have the independent auditor's report presented to City Council. And lastly, I'll come back after the auditor is done with their presentation to wrap up the options for Council. So what is the audit requirements in the city charter? It has very specific six requirements. Audit requirements are covered in Article eight, Section eight thirteen of the city charter. At the close of each fiscal year, an audit shall be made of all accounts of the city by a certified public accountant experienced in auditing municipal governments. The independent auditor shall not maintain any of the accounts of the city, act as a financial advisor to the city, have any financial interest whatsoever in any financial affairs of the city, including any member of the city council, city manager, or any department head. The council shall not select the same auditor for more than five consecutive years. Number five, upon acceptance of the independent auditor's report, a summary thereof shall be immediately published in the newspaper of general circulation in the city. And finally, copies of the audit report shall be placed on file in the city secretary's office as a public record. So highlights of the city's financial position as of year-end at September 30th, 2024. Assets, total assets, 821.8 million. Liabilities totaled 220.6 million. The net position or the equity overall was 601.2 million. The overall net position of 601.2 million is an increase of 70.8 million, or a 13.3% increase from the prior fiscal year. So now focusing on the city's general fund. Revenues and transfers in total 62.6 million. Expenditures and transfers out total 71 million. The fund balance at year-end totaled 26 million. This general fund balance of 26 million is a decrease of 8.4 million, or 24% from the prior fiscal year. This was planned as part of the budget. When the city council adopted budget, we had planned using some of the fund balance for a capital improvements program. About the independent auditor and their role. According to the city charter, the independent auditor works for you and reports to the, to you and not city staff. The audit of the city's financial statements and financial records for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024 was completed by the accounting firm of ABIP. ABIP is a certified public accounting firm licensed to practice public accountancy in the state of Texas. This is ABIP's second annual audit of the city's financial statements and financial records. About the independent auditor's report. The auditor's report is an independent and unbiased report card that addresses three very specific objectives for the city council, city management, taxpayers, and for the bondholders of Kyle. Number one, it's an independent validation of the city's financial condition based on an independent audit of the city's financial statements, accounts, and funds. Number two, it's an independent assessment of the city's accounting and financial reporting systems, internal controls, and compliance with city's financial policies and procedures. And finally, it provides an independent assurance that the city's accounting and financial reporting systems and practices are in compliance with the rules and standards as prescribed by the governmental accounting standards board. This board is the rule-making body for the entire states of the United States. Every government in the United States has to follow these rules, whether they're cities, counties, state governments. We all follow the same rules. So the types of independent auditor's report that can be issued on the financial statements of a city government like City of Kyle. Typically, there are four types of report in the order of worst to best, and I'm going to go over each one of these so it tells you exactly what they mean. So the first type of report, I'm going from worst to best. A disclaimer report. On your screen, you'll see a thumbs down and a letter grade of F. A disclaimer report, the auditor's examination was limited in such a way that they were unable to issue a report on the financial statements. This typically happens due to scope limitations, meaning staff was not cooperating with the auditors, missing or unreliable financial information, or significant financial uncertainties in the organization. So the auditor basically throws up their hands in the air, walks out, and it's a disclaimer report. The next better type of report is an adverse report. This is also, from my perspective, it's a failure on the financial team of that organization. I would give it a letter F. It's called the adverse report. This report is issued when the financial management and reporting systems and the entity's internal controls are in such poor state that the auditors have basically determined that the entity's financial statements cannot be relied upon. Typically, this happens when significant, significant errors and omissions are in their financial records, noncompliance with accounting standards, and so on. The third type of report that could possibly be issued by an auditor is a qualified report. Overall financial statements present fairly, except there are some minor glitches that they take exception to. It can be corrected, but it doesn't impair the overall presentation of the financial statements. It still presents fairly the financial position of the entity. From my perspective, I give it a letter grade C. It's still a thumbs down. The final, the best type of report an independent auditor can issue on an entity's financial, financial statements and records. It used to be called unqualified report, also known as clean report, but the younger auditors now are calling it unmodified report, but these are, it's the same report. This is the best type of report an entity can receive. So I would give it a two thumbs up and an A+.
I wonder which one we got.
So I would like to take this opportunity, Mayor and Council, that I want to thank the city's finance team for their contributions in this effort and for this major achievement for the City of Kyle. Specifically, I want to call out our city controller, Andy Alejandro, he's in the back some, there he is, for taking the lead in the compilation of the city's financial statements and the annual comprehensive financial report. I would also like to thank the auditors for doing a good job in terms of wrapping up the audit in time and covering pretty much every, every record that they could possibly review. So the City of Kyle received the best of auditor's report possible for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2024. It is the unmodified, or the, what used to be the unqualified independent auditor's report. This report is also referred to as the clean audit report. We have Ms. Janet Pittman here with us tonight, who's an audit partner with the audit firm of ABIP. She will present to you their, their findings, and after that, I'll come back and go over the options with you.
Thank you, Pervez. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Langley. I'm pleased to be here this evening to go over the results of the financial audit for 2024. I'm also here with Nick Gutierrez. He was our lead- He was our lead manager on the engagement. He was at the city with our audit team for about three weeks, looking through all of the reports and records that the city has. Anyway, what is the purpose of an audit? It is to form an opinion on your financial statements, that they are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We are required to follow two sets of standards, generally accepted auditing standards, which is issued by the A I C P A, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And also, because you're a local government, we're required to, excuse me, follow government auditing standards, which is issued by the Controller General of the United States. As Pervez said, our audit opinion is what we call unmodified, which means basically we made no modifications to your financials. They are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and this is the highest level of assurance that us as your independent auditors can provide for the city. Whoops, wrong way. In addition to our letter that's bound in your financial statements, we issue a management letter. This is required disclosures between us, your independent auditors, and the city's governance body, the city council. We are required to tell you if we had any, if you had any changes in accounting policies during two thousand twenty four and you did not. We're required to tell you, you have, do have accounting estimates with the related disclosures in your financials. Estimates are subject to change. We did review all of the inputs to the estimates, and we agree with them. Your main estimates, the larger ones in your financials, your net pension liabilities, a huge number. We get that information from T M R S and also the O P E D dollars that are in there, the liability related to your O P E Bs. We were required to tell if we had any difficulties or disagreements with management while performing our audit, and we were pleased to report that we did not. We are required to tell you if we had any major misstatements where we had an audit adjustment to some of the accounts. We did not have any adjustments of that nature. That tells me that you can rely on the financial information that you're getting throughout the year. You can rely on those to make your financial decisions. We did not make any adjustments to those. Management's required to give us a letter, and we have received that letter. It's called a management representation letter. Basically says, we got everything. They gave us everything we needed to perform our audit. We are required to tell you if management went shopping for a second opinion on an auditing or accounting matter, and that did not occur. So that's all good. And as part of our audit, we are required to do a special audit over your compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and your investment policy, and we are pleased to report to you that the city is in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for the auditor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I forgot to thank, I wanted to thank Pervet, first the city council for allowing us to provide this service and also for, to Pervez and Andy on getting us everything we needed to do to perform our audit. We asked for a lot of information.
Thank you. I know, I know, I know that you do. And so this is my ninth, it used to be called a CAFER, but I guess the young, the young crowd doesn't call it a CAFER anymore. But there's a lot to it. I know we've discussed that, but it's obviously the, you know, highest praise to you and your team for always having fantastic books. That's something that we've, we've been gold star in, you know, for as long as I've been here. So just really appreciate that. And I understand the options. I'd like to motion approve. Our motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda item sixteen as they're discussing that motion. That's Rosina.
Yeah, just quick question. Is a ten-year period like enough that you look at? It's so as we get further, are we always keeping it at ten years?
Are you talking about the statistical section in the back?
Yeah, like when you're following like most of the fiscal years, is it ten years that the period, the window?
Tenure is usually the standard. It's what's required by the Government Finance Officers Association is to have that ten-year trend information in the back of, in the back of your report. We didn't mention it, but, and I don't know the number of years, but you do receive the certificate of excellence in finance, financial reporting. And do you know how many, how many years? It's been a lot of years.
Thirteen consecutive years.
Yeah, I think it's good because it does let you see the population growth and like the median income changes and all the water things that change throughout the period as you do the long projects, right? The C I P projects are kind of captured in the ten years, right?
Yes.
I will just add to that that the, and this is something that's been said in the past, but when we, you know, we have a budget book that's about this thick every year that we pass. That's about looking forward and planning what we're going to spend. To me, this is the most important document that we have because it's a record of where we currently are and where we have been. So it's a, the numbers that are in here are real numbers. They're not projections. So it's good to, to, to look at the annual comprehensive. I don't know how, what to call it. Is there a new shorthand for it? What do you call it? ACFER?
It's annual comprehensive.
All right, to look into ACFER. It is a treasure trove of great information about the city. And so thank you for providing it in the bound copy. But as Councilmember Rosina was looking through it, I would encourage everyone to look through it in detail. It's good information. You look like you have something else you want to say.
I was just going to thank Mayor and Council.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item seventeen, consider approval of, to award R F P two thousand twenty five D D fourteen and authorize the city manager to execute contract to hire Kayla Myers Consulting, D B A Bridgepoint Evaluation, to conduct a quality of life study for the city of Kyle for not to exceed amount of seventy nine thousand sixty five dollars.
Coming.
Ms. Trulove.
Good evening, Rosie Trulove, Director of Administrative Services. We're here today to award and execute the contract for the quality of life study that was requested by council. So by way of background, this item was brought forward as an item from council in August. And on the September seventeenth council agenda, council authorized staff to go forward with an R F Q or an R F P rather. The selected consultant will conduct a thorough evaluation of the city's infrastructure, services, programs, with particular attention to how we serve people with disabilities. The study will evaluate both physical and digital accessibility, as well as the availability and inclusivity of health care, employment, education, and social opportunities. And the project will include public feedback through surveys and community outreach to ensure that the study aligns with our local priorities and identifies practical and cost-effective improvements. So deliverables include a project plan, which will be a detailed plan outlining our methodology, timeline, and milestones, interim progress reports, a monthly report, or I'm sorry, a progress report summarizing key findings and updates from the community outreach and data collection phases, as well as a comprehensive final report that will summarize findings across all areas of focus, include actionable, cost-effective recommendations for improving accessibility, health care, and economic opportunities, education, and social inclusion, and then a prioritized list of small-scale, budget-friendly initiatives to be implemented by the city. Public feedback summary and any suggested changes based on community input will also be included. The selected consultant has given us a schedule that is estimated to last approximately nine months. The city issued this R F P in January of this year, and it closed on February fourth. The panel of city staff evaluated the three submissions that were received, and the selected firm submitted the best evaluated responsive offer following our process. So the staff brings forward this item to you to authorize the city manager to execute a contract to hire Bridgepoint Evaluation to conduct the quality of life study for the city of Kyle in an amount of seventy nine thousand sixty five dollars, and staff recommends approving the contract.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, motions? Councilmember Rosina.
Yeah, just sorry, just like to jump in. I think we're going to probably get really valuable information about the makeup and demographics and all social incomes of our city here. I think when I was looking at the last survey from the parks, you could see the areas where there was more need for, you know, assistance or walkability and stuff, so social vulnerability areas. So this quality of life, I'm assuming it's going into finding us more data in those sectors that, you know, we might have to improve upon in the city?
Yes. And we do have a representative here of Bridgepoint Evaluation, should there be any questions for them?
All right, any other discussion points? A motion to approve?
I'd like to make.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we, Mayor Protem, that we approve agenda item seventeen. It's the discussion on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is agenda item eighteen, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the construction of a playground at Steeplechase Park to Whirlix Design, Inc., in an amount of seven hundred fifty thousand two hundred and twenty dollars plus a five percent construction contingency for a total contract amount not to exceed seven hundred eighty seven thousand seven hundred thirty one dollars through the buy board cooperative purchasing program. Ms. Trulove.
Whirlix is a fun company name to say, and that's what we're going to be talking about today. We'll go through history and timeline and talk a little bit about the concept summaries, as well as what the proposed improvements are going to be. So staff assessed the playground at Steeplechase Park and determined that there was a need for replacement. Staff engaged with Whirlix Design, a landscape structures vendor, to develop an assessment and provide three concepts for the community to select based on. The feedback and support from the Parks Board in January and city council was received in February. Per council direction, staff conducted a public engagement process for the community to select a favorite option. Survey was open from February tenth through February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five, and, and to bring back community selection and consideration to approve the contract for the playground purchase and construction, which is our, our task here today. The three concepts that we had incorporated the following: inclusive amenities, synthetic grass and a porin surfacing, a calming tunnel mound, use of existing shade and the addition of shade to swings, and improvement of accessibility and mobility throughout the perimeter. Each concept provided a different aesthetic, the first one being a themed concept, the second one being a more traditional concept, and the third one being a more modern concept. From the survey, we received a total of five hundred and ten responses. Again, it was open for three weeks. Thirty-one percent of the respondents required special assistance, either sensory, physical, cognitive, auditory, or other special assistance. Option three received forty percent of the votes for this particular effort, with option one and option two both receiving thirty percent. So the modern concept received the most votes. Several comments specifically mentioned the merry-go-round to be featured in either option, and several comments supported the need for, for shade. So the proposed improvements here would include an improved accessible surfacing, shade, new playground equipment, enhanced landscaping, and the addition of sidewalk and seating around the playground. The cost for the improvements is seven hundred fifty thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Here's some additional images of our modern concept three. Based on public input, staff recommends a selection of option three, the modern concept The timeline that we have in front of us shows back from the beginning of presenting this initial feedback to the Parks Board in January. The lead time for equipment is probably the biggest piece of this, which is, is ten to twelve weeks. So assuming we, we move forward with this today, we would see construction or a grand reopening in the August, September timeframe for, for this project. Following survey results from the public, following the survey results from the public, where the option or the, the action that we have in front of us today is to consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the construction of a playground at Steeplechase Park in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand two hundred and twenty dollars plus a five percent contingency for a total contract amount of seven hundred eighty seven thousand seven hundred thirty one dollars. And staff recommends approving the resolution.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Rozelle.
Yeah, just want to say, great job by everyone involved, Rosie, David, the Parks Board, everybody getting the feedback. It's great to see the public decide what they want and what they love to see in their park, to get that, to engage them and get the amount of feedback we got back. It was great. I was watching some of the comments and everything else, so it was really exciting. There was some pros and cons, but at the end, it was, it was a good conversation and just good job to everybody involved. Thank you all.
Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, thank you. Steeplechase is in the area where I'm at. Very excited for the residents there and for everybody that's going to be able to come and use it across the city. The question is, when it comes to the special assistance, I did have somebody reach out to me, if somebody's in a wheelchair or if somebody's in a walker or in that niche, what kind of concept designs are we going to have for people to have access with, with, or children to have the sensory and accessibility for that?
Yeah, absolutely. Chris Scoto, Parks Deputy Director. So if you recall, a lot of the information that was provided had a lot of elements where there were sensory components, that there's wall attachments, so somebody that's wheelchair-bound can come up to a play feature and interact with it in several capacities. There is playground standards that incorporate transfer tables and such activities that somebody that can come off of a wheelchair and navigate through the play, playground equipment, they can. So there are a number of features, as we alluded to at the beginning, that Ms. Trulove captured. There's a lot of inclusive components that talk about sensory, talk about auditory, talk about communication signs. So another component that you're not seeing here is us incorporating a communication sign. So anybody that has a speech impairment can point to a certain letter, phrase, whatever it may be, to interact in that manner. So that's something that, that we, we take seriously as park professionals, so we'll make sure that we're incorporating several inclusive components.
The accessibility to, from the parking lot to the playground.
Absolutely. Yeah, so one thing that we're looking to do with parking lot improvements is incorporate that, one thing that's mentioned in this, if you familiarize yourself and help me get a picture of Steeplechase Park, there are benches surrounding the playground. There's no sidewalks connecting to those. So this scope is going to incorporate, those, this scope is going to incorporate that. So that's something that we're looking to do.
Cool. That was, that was, somebody from my district was asking about that. Because there's, I mean, you have to really push the person onto the gravel into the park itself, but then again, it was, that's all they had was dirt, but it looks like there's going to be some good improvements on that end, including what you're saying about mobility, sensory, and also the fine motor skill concept on that end, which I appreciate.
Councilmember Rosina.
Thank you, yeah. And thank you for putting out the survey and getting the feedback from, from the residents. So when we went to the, the visioning workshop, we really came out of there with the concept of best product quality. That's what we want.
Absolutely.
And we want this vision to be the best parks Kyle has. So when I look at this, I want to make sure that we incorporate like those other elements, like the climbing rock structures or the zip lines, things that make it a better product. Because I don't want us to re-circle like the splash pad design. So are we there with the seven eighty, or do we need to really make it best quality product?
Yeah.
That's, that's my concern. I don't, don't want to have to explain later why we didn't add the zip lines or like the little rock climbers, things that create more fun at the park. Because that's, we want best quality product. And I'm challenging, you know, the council, but also us, that we, that we stick to that. You know, that we don't just put up some tarps and swings, that, but that, we want that vision, best quality product.
I couldn't agree with you more. So that is something that we're looking to incorporate, the current staff that's in place. We hear the council, we hear city manager's office, we're, we're seeking quality. So that's something that, that we're looking to do in every type of project that we're looking to incorporate. Answer your question on how we're going to be featuring or a, a zip line. There's not a zip line identified in this project, however, that is something that we're looking to incorporate in several parks. So one of the things that you're looking at from a park development, park planning standpoint, is the identity of a park. And one thing that hasn't even been mentioned is that we're looking to go further into implementing master plans, site-specific master plans, as you got the update last month from our consultant, Stan Tech team, for us to be able to think bigger rather than just focusing on individual piecemealing projects. So we're looking to look at it from a holistic view, and how do we connect those, the vibe trail? How do we connect all these various components to upgrade the current system? And to your point on the example of the splash pad, that's something that, that we do not want to, to go to again. So that is something that we're looking at and taking very seriously when making these decisions and providing them to you all.
Brian, anything you can speak to about that? I mean, on the visioning workshop?